This time, a call to order, the school board for the Mesquite Norway School District. Verification of the meeting. This meeting was announced in accordance with the Wisconsin Open Edings Law. Attendance's roll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mrs. Valls.
Here.
Mr. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Buckmaster.
Here.
Mrs. Blair is absent and excused. Mrs. Boyer.
Here.
We have six, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Boyer, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Motion is ordered to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda is approved as presented. Item two, consent agenda. Motion is in order to approve the consent agenda engrossed.
So move.
Any further discussion or items that need to be pulled for individual consideration? Here are none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Consent agenda carries engrossed. Item three, superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson.
Well, we have an evening of champions today. It's wonderful to be able to celebrate so many student athletes and students involved in different things within our community. So, we'll start with the girls' state soccer champions. So if the girls could all come on up, along with coaches who are here, that would be fabulous. Yeah, we have a small U, so let's see. Why don't you all stand right there? That might be the best, that's probably going to be the best bet for us here. Well, first of all, let's give these girls a round of applause. And then in addition, of course, as we know, the athletes are strengthened through their coaches, so let's give a round of applause to the coaches. If you could wave your hands, coaches. I think I have certificates for you tonight, too, so, but we'll start with the girls. Yep, they're all the same.
So I'm going to read one, and then I will read each of your names individually as you get home. Okay?
And then don't go anywhere. Just stand in back and it will take a picture.
Certificate of Appreciation. The Mesquite Norway School Board hereby congratulates Hannah Anderson for her contribution to the girls' soccer, sorry, soccer team, for the honor of winning the WIAA 2019 Division One Girls Soccer State Championship. The Mesquite Norway School Board commands Hannah Anderson for her perseverance, team spirit, and commitment to excellence in the sport of girls' soccer that has brought honor to herself, her family, and the Mesquite Norway Schools and community. The Mesquite Norway School Board wishes Hannah Anderson success in her future education and career goals presented this fifteenth day of July 2019, and signed by the officers of the school board. Congratulations. We'll start with Hannah. She's going to read first, right? So, okay.
It's her sister. She got.
Okay, and then Madeline Anderson for the Girls Soccer State Championship. Congratulations. And Mackenzie Balsaray. Sophia Balascuri. Edison Bergman. Heather Blair. Your mom wants to make sure I say a good shout out. Jordans are potted. And Bert Doherty. Mia Frendal. I gotta get the superintendent. Gabriela Garcia. Sydney Brinkel. Haley Droho. Idris Hutchins. Jacqueline Jerrys. Sarah Jackins. Summer Malinaszkis. Gavakina Nukovich. Emma Pinklitz. Keely Radke. Olivia Schneider. Jacqueline Stadler. Morgan Toos. Madeline Thorsten. Kini Wazia. Megan Weber. Madison Wojcik.
Now, we've got to go to the coaches.
Coaches. So, certificate of appreciation. The Mesquite Norway School Board congratulates Coach Lance Matthews for a fabulous 2018-19 Mesquite High School Girls Soccer season that culminated with the team winning the Girls 2019 Division One State Championship. The Mesquite Norway School Board commands Coach Lance Matthews for his exceptional ability to lead a remarkable coaching staff, engage and support athletes with his coaching skills, and provide guidance and encouragement for his athletes to perform at the highest level attainable in high school sports. The Mesquite Norway School Board commands Coach Lance Matthews for an outstanding 2018-19 Girls Soccer season presented this fifteenth day of July 2019 by the officers of the Mesquite Norway School Board.
It's the same.
Okay, and then the assistant coach, Courtney List-Lessner?
Give a little recap of the season?
Sure, I'd love to say something. I guess the biggest thing is just thank you to the girls for all their hard work that they put in. They totally deserve this. It was just super cool to watch all their hard work pay off. Thank you to all of you for the support that you've given us to allow the girls to be out there and to be able to succeed like they did. It wouldn't happen without everybody here and without everybody in the community, so just super thankful, and these guys did a great job, and hopefully more to come.
Thank you. We're going to try to get a picture, maybe.
Get your fish eye wide. Ready, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three, double.
Oh, we got one more. Next, we have the Girls Track and Field.
It's no shorter, is it?
Ashley Girls, if you want to come around here and coaches, it might be better over on this side of this tie. So tonight, let's give our state champion Track and Field Girls Team a round of applause. We have a few of our coaches here, too. Let's give them a round of applause. So we're honored, we're going to be able to give you your state champion medals, too, tonight. They came in, and Coach Rainey asked if we would give them to you as well, so, all right, so we'll start with the girls.
So again, I'll read through one certificate and call that first number, and I'll just call you when you have to. So, certificate of appreciation. Mesquite Norway School Board hereby congratulates Erin Bezavar for her contribution to the team for the honor of winning the WIAA 2019 Division One Girls Track and Field State Championship. The Mesquite Norway School Board commends Erin for her perseverance, team spirit, and commitment to excellence in the sport of girls' track and field that has brought honor to herself, her family, and the Mesquite Norway Schools and community. The Mesquite Norway School Board wishes Erin success in her future education and career goals presented this fifteenth day of July 2019, and signed by the officers of the Mesquite School Board. Erin? Macy Bruskowski. Mackenzie Zarneki. Amelia, Amelia DeTalamangas? Nicole Dorf? Madison Hopper? Grease Lundy? Alika Oxper? Annika Oxper? Isabella Seitz? Jasmina? How do you pronounce?
It's Yasmina.
Oh, Yasmina?
Sefibish.
Sefibish. Congratulations. Emma Lort?
No, I didn't get you, Emma.
Savannah Balsaray? Brittany Helm? Rachel Helm? Kate Jagons? Kate Spurka?
And we have some coaches.
Okay, certificate of appreciation. The Mesquite Norway School Board congratulates Coach Richard Rich Brainy for a fabulous 2018-19 Mesquite High School Girls Track and Field season that culminated with the team winning the Girls Track and Field 2019 Division One State Championship. The Mesquite Norway School Board commands Coach Rich Brainy for his exceptional ability to lead a remarkable coaching staff, engage and support athletes with his coaching skills, and provide guidance and encouragement for his athletes to perform at the highest level attainable in high school sports. The Mesquite Norway School Board commands Coach Rich Brainy for an outstanding 2018-19 Girls Track and Field season presented this fifteenth day of July 2019, and signed by the officers of the Mesquite Norway School Board. Then assistant coach Jennifer War. Michelle Copet? Not here. I got anybody glasses on. And Jerome is not here.
He's coaching.
Kale? Kale Brown? Talon? That's all right. Okay, and then Joe.
Joe and Ken. CJ was here. I thought I said.
CJ, no CJ.
Go.
He was here, okay.
All right. All right, so would you like to say a couple words?
Well, first I'd first like to thank my assistant coaches. I actually was on family leave. My wife had a baby right in the beginning of the outdoor track season, so it was really great. I left in the end of April and came back, and the next day I came back, we won a state championship. From a coaching stress perspective, Coach Matthews totally recommend that. Really, just giving all of your assistance. They did an incredible job continuing to facilitate just the philosophy that we've always had. I'd also really like to especially thank the school board. You guys recently passed some money for us to help with pole vault. We won by two points this year, and we scored four points in pole vault.
Cool.
So, thank you guys very, very much. Oh, you told me four.
I said, I got four, but I got five.
You're killing, give me back the medal, War. We won by two points, and we scored five in pole vault, but the fact of the matter still remains, I'm not a math teacher, but regardless, without pole vault, we just, we don't win. So thank you guys for that, thank you for that commitment. I'd also like to thank Mr. Buckmaster for being the best announcer at the Special Olympics that we could have. And again, I just want to thank the kids for their commitment, the parents for all of their help and support as well. It was a great season, it was a wild ride, and yeah, hopefully, like Coach said, we'll have many more to come, so, thank you guys. I do what I can with what I've got.
Is that crazy?
Oh, good. You got all that? Thank you. Now we'd like to invite the boys to whiskey at Track and Field that first and second place. Well, so we're honored to be able to recognize one of our two, our two teams, one of our members that have been used.
So, certificate of appreciation. The school board, the Mesquite Norway School Board, congratulates Joshua Blair for the honor of earning second place in the four-by-one-hundred relay in a time of forty-two point one-seventh seconds at the WIAA 2019 Boys Track and Field State Championship. The Mesquite Norway School Board also commands Joshua Blair for earning twelfth place in the four-by-one-hundred relay at the New Balance Nationals. The Mesquite Norway School Board commands Joshua Blair for his perseverance, team spirit, and commitment to excellence in the sport of boys' track and field that has brought honor to himself, his family, and the Mesquite Norway Schools and community. The Mesquite Norway School Board wishes Joshua Blair success in his future endeavors and career goals presented this fifteenth day of July 2019, signed by the officers of the Mesquite School Board. Congratulations.
Now, we are recognizing our Destination Imagination students. Do you want to come on up?
The Mesquite Norway School Board hereby commands Karen Peterson for qualifying to compete in the 2019 Destination Imagination World Competition. The team known as Keep Your Head in the Game was composed of students from Lakeview Middle School and Mesquite Lakes Middle School. The team was challenged to solve a creative problem in a fine arts category called game art. The members conducted research in the game of jacks. They designed and created a container which held all elements of the game which was then transported and transformed during their presentation, including a theatrical presentation of a game component. The challenge also included a technical element in which the team changed its scenery without direct help from any team member. Karen Peterson is to be commended for her part in the Keep Your Head in the Game team. Through this accomplishment, Karen has brought honor not only to herself and her family, but to the Mesquite Norway Schools and community as well. The Mesquite Norway School Board wishes Karen with the success in her future educational and career endeavors presented this fifteenth day of July 2019, signed by the officers of the school board. Karen, congratulations. Eric Alfredson? Not here. And Claire Hisky?
Martha Crapfleer? Hello, thank you so much for dedicating so much time and energy. Would you like to share yours of the experience of going to world awards?
I would just say, these kids are amazing, right? What you didn't mention is there can be absolutely no parent involvement. Parents have to decide something that shows they will not be involved in solving it, and as a coach, I can't make these suggestions either. So they have to figure it all out by themselves, so it's problem solving, it's creativity, it's performing, and they spent about four months working on their problems, and they had a regional competition, and then a state of Wisconsin competition, and they got through that, and then they had a global competition, and at globes, there were students like themselves from eighteen different countries. So it's a real international experience and something that they'll never forget. So, we would like to thank the school board, amazing support, not every district does this, so without your help, they would never have these kinds of experiences, and they want to thank their parents, too.
Thank you so much for leading the two.
I did. We see you, Denise.
How long have you been leading that program?
Thirty-two years.
Oh, wow.
And we've only not gone to world once.
And you what?
We've only not gone to world once. So that's a lot to say about.
Well, you've actually sent us way back and obviously the money.
Right, right, yeah. I'm so proud of these girls. And Heather. They are fierce.
You want to keep those certificates you got and take the photo?
Challenge featured 11 teams where participants had 100 days to build their racing motorcycle using a vintage chassis. Teams are judged in a point value system using multiple factors. Among them are design, horsepower, hit-through challenge, performance against other built teams, and an actual race of their competing motorcycle along with a people's choice event. The Muskego Norway School Board commands Brian for his dedicated service to build all of the team efforts while her teamwork to build the winning motorcycle in addition to learning valuable life skills. The Muskego Norway School Board wishes Brian success in his future educational and career efforts presented this 15th day of July 2019, signed by the officers of the School Board. Tyler Hayes.
And I'm going to go to Jeremy Roderick.
Could you like to say anything about the process and journey that these gentlemen went on?
It really is all them. I just bring the pizza. Jeri, what'd you do this year?
What'd you do? Well, we started over the 1970s Honda motorcycle. If you watch American Pickle Show, it looked like, it looked like a bike that came out of a barn by 10,000 hours. So we started on the bike, it looked like that, and then, so we had 100 days to look like, ground up basically, we got a power supply, we do all kinds of batteries, positive exhaust, a bunch of engine work, to meet all the goals and win all the championships. So, we built the bike week, every year, it's been a little different. So our first year in the program, we did a road race, and second year, and this year it's been a flat track, and so, yeah, it's been a lot of fun. It's been a good journey.
It's good on that. Nice. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Hold on.
We can move back to the E S C now, huh, brother?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the superintendent's report is student services report. As they get things set up, I do want to first recognize, we have two principals here from Mill Valley, and one of the items is to recognize Mill Valley for their achievement of a silver ranking from DPI, for their commitment to implementing a strong and effective positive behavior intervention system. You might know that as PBIS, that contributes to the environment of, at Mill Valley, to create a conducive learning environment for students. So, we are so thankful for your commitment to that program, and so proud of the fact that you're Tier Two, and you're really moving us forward, you're leading our system into understanding what PBIS can look like and should look like, and we just really appreciate you being at the, you know, front of the pack, if you will, really showing us what effective PBIS programming can look like. So let's give them a round of applause. And there's nothing you want to say?
No, other than I was thinking about it, I thought, wow, we still managed to achieve the silver award despite the fact that we gained almost 100 students and have a new staff who may be in that level, and so I was reflecting, and I thought, that's pretty amazing.
That is pretty amazing, great point.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being here and seeing, this is the first time, I'm sure, the board has seen Laura since her move to Lakeview as principal. We give her a round of applause too. And we don't see us, you know, the dynamic duo will still be, you know, part of our system, and we are very confident in Laura's leadership at Lakeview, and we're very excited with her principalship.
And you picked a great time, you're getting air conditioning.
Yeah, I know, right?
Although hosting interviews has been more at Mill Valley.
Yeah, it's a little disheveled, but thank you so much for being here tonight, appreciate that. Okay, thank you for your patience.
Okay, so I'm going to open the student services report with the 2018-19 seclusion and restraint report, if you want to move to the next slide. This is a report that is mandated under Act 125 of the Wisconsin Statute. This Act 125 governs the implementation of seclusion and restraint practices in public schools, and this report requires that annually I present to you the total number of seclusion and restraint events that have occurred in all of our buildings, the total number of students who are involved in those events, and then how many of those students are children with disabilities.
So, for the purpose of this report, I just wanted to define for you what seclusion and restraint is. So seclusion is if a student is confined to a room or a location and is being physically prevented from leaving that room or location. Restraint refers to the restriction of a student's body in a manner that immobilizes their ability to move their torso, head, arms, or legs, and head freely. So, as you can imagine, placing a student in a seclusion situation or in a physical restraint is a pretty significant response. We take that, that tool and use it very, very carefully. It is only to be implemented if there, if the child is at risk or imminent danger of significant harm to themselves or to another person. So, prior to anybody being allowed in our system to place a student in a restraint hold, which is a protective hold, or to engage in seclusion behavior with a child, they need to go through a two-day training. We use non-violent crisis prevention intervention. It is, the emphasis of the training is really on de-escalating emotionally charged situations or situations in which a child is emotionally dysregulated, so that we can avoid at all costs the use of a seclusion situation, or more significantly, a restraint situation. The law requires that the district has one, a minimum, minimum of one individual trained, and we have over 200 staff members in our system trained. The training is offered twice a year. We require that anybody who is trained needs to update their training every three years. People are always welcome to come back for additional training in the interim. If we, if I observe a situation in which there is a child who has more regular incidents of seclusion or restraint, all staff interacting with that child must come to the next training. All the people that are required within our system to have that training, per our district process, is every special education case manager, every therapist, every special education instructional assistant, all school psychologists, and all school social workers. We also have, many of our building principals have selected to have their crisis teams trained in this, in the event that they're called for. Mill Valley uses the term code blue, and that is to say, we need some additional staff people to assist in a student situation. Oftentimes, they have those individuals trained as well. So we also have additional regular ed teachers, regular ed instructional assistants, and then building principals trained. Yes?
How often do you have to go update your training on that?
So internally, we require that you are trained, if you're in one of the required positions, within one year of employment, and you must update at minimum every three years.
Is that law or our standards?
It's our standard, and it exceeds the standard of the recommendation. Sure.
Kari, the 200 staff that we have trained are significantly higher than the one, it's like, really, is there a story behind that? Just something that you managed to pioneer through our system, or?
We have two individuals, actually, we have three, we now have two individuals who are trained trainers for this, and we just recognize as the system that if we're putting a child in a protective hold, that's a pretty significant response, and the responsibility for ensuring that child's safety, as well as the safety of our staff members, is of utmost importance. So, we don't want a child being injured if an adult has them in a protective hold that could cause them to have difficulty breathing or something of that nature, but we also really feel that it's important that our staff are doing it properly, so they're not hurting their back, or, you know, some, some of those types of things. But I think the most important thing about this training is the, the tools that are provided to those participating to de-escalate difficult situations, and they're tools that are applicable with youth as well as adults, so.
Thank you, it's incredible, Bob.
Thank you. So, this is, I've given you some trend data here, so you can kind of see what things have looked like over the years. This year, the number of seclusion and restraint events that occurred within our system was 25. We have approximately 5,000 students in the system. Of those 5,000 students, there were six students that were involved in either a seclusion or restraint event, and of those six students, all of those children were children that had IEPs. Are there any questions about that? Okay? And then, if there's any other questions? All right.
I'm just curious who the train, the trainers are, if you don't mind sharing their names.
I don't mind. Deanna Welsh, she is our elementary school social worker, and then Beth MacBadsen, who is a high school special education teacher. Yeah, we appreciate that.
They did the effort to do that, that helps.
It does, it does. All right, thank you. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy, and she's going to give you an update on our health services within the district.
Hello, everybody, my name is Tracy Stotaker, I am your district nurse. You have not seen me before. This is my first presentation before the board. It's my second year with Muskego. The first year, Kari said, well, I'm not going to make her do that, let her get her sea legs first, and so I got my sea legs, and here I am presenting to you. So just a little bit of my background, I am a nurse and an attorney, so I'm heavy into the administrative and regulatory issues, and I think some of you have seen my slides, and the last number of slides are just a smattering of the regulations that I won't go into at all, the laws, regulations, and duties we have, but I wanted you to know how heavily regulated healthcare within the school is. So, moving on to the next slide, I don't know what my cue will be. Beep beep, beep beep, okay. So, providing healthcare to our students is an absolute team approach. I have the best, best health room aides in the state, I can vouch for that. I have 11 part-time, and some of the names you might recognize, they've been around a long time, I inherited them, they are awesome. They are part-timers, so the way that it works in each school is that there's a morning person and an afternoon person, and then at Lakeview, we have one person that then we have the secretary filling in. We are looking at creative staffing solutions, it's one of the things that I'll talk about, because I want to retain these people, they are the best. We have a medical director, Dr. Darren Mako, and I think many of you know him in the community. My interface with him is, we are required to have one under state law. I touch base with him whenever I have questions, he reaches out to me when he has questions. We don't have a formal meeting, other than probably about once a month, we have a touch base. We meet in the beginning of the year, look to see what we want to put through, and initiatives, and then I'll have a wrap-up early August, reflecting back on the year prior. So he's wonderful to work with, very supportive. So, what I want to do is go over a few statistics, because that's really where my, my mind has been. I needed to understand the universe that we have, so I can best decide where we need to go and what initiatives we need to do. So, health visits overall, and you do have these slides, right? You've had these to review, okay, so this won't be new to you, but total of 39,000 visits for the school year, and I know that sounds like a lot, and it is, but remember that there are visits, and there are visits. There is a kid walking in for an ice pack, all the way to a kid having concussion symptoms, all the way to an athletic injury, so it runs the gamut, okay? But you can, and you can see, it pretty much mirrors the census of the schools. So, of course, the high school will have quite a bit, Lakeview has a little bit more, and I'll touch base on that, that was a question that was presented to me via email by Tracy Blair, Blair, she's not here, so I might be able to touch on that a little bit later, if you have any questions and incorporate that. So, comparatively, there's really not too much of a change, because we had the schools, Muskego L, Test Corners, and Country Meadows kind of combined, and we've reduced the number. Actually, the, the numbers are very similar, so no concerns in the total visits from the year prior to this year. So that works out to a daily visit here, that, of course, for the high school, about 33 visits, and I, and I have some statistics also for how long visits are, but an average of 36 for the district, 658 for the month, I know this is a little bit, a little bit steady here, a little bit in the weeds, go ahead, and then, what it is per hour. This is a little bit more representative of what a day would look like. So about six visits per day. Now, that doesn't sound like much, but imagine that you have one kid popping in, but another kid that's staying for a couple of hours, because they need observation and evaluation, contacting the parent, so again, the timeframe runs the gamut too. I will say that some of the visits where a kid pops in, and it's just an ice pack, it's just getting a Band-Aid, we don't really record those. I would love to have those numbers, but, you know, perfection is the enemy, right? I mean, I can only ask so much when they're very busy and, and recording everything. Go ahead. And you can see the minutes, this is again, where it, where it really makes a difference. 15 minutes average visit for the health room in the high school, and the elementary schools have a little bit less, they're a little bit more in and out. The 15 minutes, I will say, for the, for the high school, it's a lot of rest, it's a lot of, again, concussions that we see, athletic injuries that need some rest, some of these come from physician orders where they need to rest, and that's an order that if they are having symptoms, they need to go to the health room and, and take a break. Go ahead. So this is the, the conditions that we are dealing with, for the most part. Now, this is not going to reflect what we see as far as a concussion or an athletic injury. This is reported conditions by parents. One of the questions that Tracy presented was, well, I'm surprised to see a lot of influenza, or, wow, we had a lot of strep throat. Remember that this is voluntary, so this is when a parent calls up and lets us know why their student is absent, what they're experiencing. I try to get the parents to let me know the communicable diseases, so that I can inform those that are immune compromised, whether or not there's a risk for those kids to come to school. So this is, these are acute health conditions that parents report to us, not necessarily the visits that are coming to the health room, per se. Those, those conditions I'll, I'll talk about a little bit, the statistics are difficult to get. And again, this is last year, so very, very similar compared to this year. We see the strep throats, we see the influences, we see the lice, it is what it is, but I will tell you that this is very normal, all of this is very normal, compared, when we, when you consider the population of our district. Go ahead.
So just to clarify.
Yeah.
When a parent calls in, they're calling in their
Now, that doesn't sound like much, but imagine that you have one kid popping in, but another kid that's staying for a couple of hours because they need observation and evaluation, contacting the parent. So, again, the timeframe runs the gamut, too. I will say that some of the visits where a kid pops in, and it's just an ice pack, it's just getting a Band-Aid, we don't really record those. I would love to have those numbers, but you know, perfection is the enemy, right? I mean, I can only ask so much when they're very busy and recording everything. Go ahead. And you can see the minutes. This is again where it really makes a difference. 15 minutes average visit for the health room in the high school, and the elementary schools have a little bit less. They're a little bit more in and out. The 15 minutes, I will say, for the high school, it's a lot of rest, it's a lot of, again, concussions that we see, athletic injuries that need some rest. Some of these come from physician orders where they need to rest, and that's an order that if they are having symptoms, they need to go to the health room and take a break. Go ahead. So, this is the conditions that we are dealing with for the most part. Now, this is not going to reflect what we see as far as a concussion or an athletic injury. This is reported conditions by parents. One of the questions that Tracy presented was, "Well, I'm surprised to see a lot of influenza," or, "Wow, we had a lot of strep throat." Remember that this is voluntary. So, this is when a parent calls up and lets us know why their student is absent, what they're experiencing. I try to get the parents to let me know the communicable diseases so that I can inform those that are immune compromised whether or not there's a risk for those kiddos to come to school. So, this is, these are acute health conditions that parents report to us, not necessarily the visits that are coming to the health room, per se. Those conditions I'll talk about a little bit. The statistics are difficult to get. And again, this is last year, so very, very similar compared to this year. We see the strep throats, we see the influences, we see the lice, it is what it is. But I will tell you that this is very normal. All of this is very normal compared, when you consider the population of our district. Go ahead.
So, just to clarify.
Yeah.
When a parent calls in, they're calling in their child sick because of the flu, and you count that?
We count that. There is a work in progress, I'll touch base on that a little bit. So, there are parents that call into attendance, parents that call into the health office, and the communication between the attendance office and the health room, we're trying to strengthen that. So, I have a better grasp of what our kids are experiencing in the community. I like to know when we start, we are starting to get the flu to appear here because we tend to get it a little bit later when I look at the Wisconsin statistics. Milwaukee will get it, Madison will get it, Racine will get it, and then we'll start to flourish. And that's again where I look at talking to the immune compromised families and seeing if I can help them make a decision. But yes, they do report it, it's voluntary. If there is a kiddo that I'm worried about, like parent maybe reported a high fever, I'll call the parent and ask a little bit more information. It might pique my interest, put a little red flag. I can't compel them, we don't have pleasing or compelling authority, that would be the public health department. But I do want to keep an eye on that. And I tell you, the parents are great. I mean, once you explain to them the rationale for doing these things, they're great about giving a little bit more information. Okay, go ahead. And that, don't even worry about that, that's something that is very small, but it's in your slides if you want to see the breakdown, the breakdown. So, this is another hot topic that I wanted to bring up, vaccine compliance. And for the district, we are very compliant. We have no problems with the public health department with state reporting, we are well under what we need to do. But the question I get asked most is, what students are at risk? And it's always about measles because that's where we're at with our head right now. What students are at risk, either because the parents have opted to waiver, or because they can't have the immunization? So, let's flip to the next slide. So, this is not wavered and not immunized. We have 104 students that could, if they were exposed to measles, have the potential to get measles, and you can see for the rest of them. They're legal, they're fine, they are either not immunized because they have a health condition that exempts them, or they're wavered because of the parent choice. But these are important numbers for you to know, I think, that we do have this, 104 kids with measles. Wisconsin is the last state that has not seen a measles case yet. We are surrounded by every state in the Midwest that has had measles cases. And you'll be the first to know if we get a measles case in this area. You'll be the first to know. Maybe you, maybe I'll text you at night, 11 o'clock at night, I just got a report. But, so I watch this, I really monitor it. I think it's really important. Go ahead. And just, again, a little bit more detail into the breakdown of the schools where there is, either they're not immunized, or they have a waiver. 97 kids in the waiver in the district have an MMR waiver, seven are because they meet an exemption criteria. Kids that are receiving chemotherapy, kids that have pre-existing conditions, those kids are not receiving the immunizations. You can flip through, let's just kind of go through all these. As long as you have the stats in your slides, that's, I think, pretty good. So, let's flip through all the way through varicella and what do we do? Next slide. So, what do we do in the health room? What does healthcare in, providing to kids in the district encompass? We give scheduled medications. We appraise kids that are coming in. We either call their parents, we call EMS if it needs to be escalated to that level. They'll call me, the aides will call me. I'll either go to the school, or my office is in the high school, I'll be right there for further evaluation, consultation. We try to get them returned to class, and sometimes they have to stay in the health office for a little bit. That's where the 15 minutes in the high school, sometimes they need to rest. And if they're not rested and they're not focused, they're not learning. So, we give them a limited period of time before we boot them out and so they go back to class. We also do a lot of heavy documentation for interventions. We communicate with staff. So, for example, kid is reported to have a concussion. We need to get the restrictions and accommodations necessary for that child out to the staff. We send emails, I do clarifications with them. So, if they need differences in lighting, if they need extended test-taking time, if they need exemptions from their assignments. So, we go through a lot of staff communication based on healthcare needs and accommodations and restrictions. And those are always done with a physician order. We will put preliminary accommodations and restrictions in place. So, kid got a concussion last night, we find out about it, they haven't seen the doctor yet, we haven't gotten things, but common sense and practicality dictates that we're going to put something in place. We put something in place, then we get the physician orders, and that complies with all of the laws that I illustrated on those latter slides because it really does fall into, under the ADA, and we, and it's just the right thing to do. We can't push these kids too far. We also do, are on the medical alert teams, and the field trip planning and preparations are extensive. So, every time a kid leaves their school and goes on a field trip, or even a kid that goes from Muskego Lakes to the high school, that's a field trip, and we are responsible for their healthcare. That means that the staff have to be trained to provide emergency interventions. That means that they have to get their scheduled medications, and the staff has to be trained to give that and have the list. The staff has to have a list of all of the conditions of the kids that they're taking. So, it's a heavy load for the HRAs to do this for all of the field trips you can just imagine. And you can also imagine that Great America is probably our biggest nightmare because that is, I mean, God bless them for going, but man, it is really something. They are running all over the place, and so I keep my cellphone really close during those Great America field trips. Go ahead. Now, my responsibilities, and I won't go through all of these, but I am much more management and administrative, okay? The protocols for health are dictated, or provided, I should say, by DPI. So, how to treat a wound, how to do things, I'm not reinventing the wheel with that. Those are done the same in all the districts, and what that does is it actually moves risk onto that. So, we're not inventing it, so if we follow that protocol, we're not assuming the risk as a district. So, that's a great thing to have, and I'm glad the DPI puts out those protocols. But we do have internal protocols on how to do things, how to document things, when to call. So, I'm very heavy into getting those systems in place. I also do the staff evaluation, scheduling, the budget, supplies, manage the website. I do welcome you to go to the website. I keep a lot of information there, I update it a lot with regard to conditions that we're seeing in the state. So, go there and peruse it around, I have all the forums there. It stimulates a lot of conversations from parents. So, please go to that, I do the statistics and the reports. I review every physician order. That's another thing that is, it's time-consuming, but it's necessary because all of the HRAs, the aides, practice under my license. I am your only licensed healthcare provider in the district. So, everything falls under my license, under the rules and laws of delegation. And so, I must review every order, make sure it's appropriate, make sure it follows all the rules for a physician order, dialogue with that physician if necessary, and then I delegate it out, I explain it out to those aides. Some of them are easy, right? You know, a medication order, you know, antibiotic order, ADHD meds, those are pretty simple. But you can imagine, I sometimes get three or four-page orders for the concussion kids, for muscular skeletal injury and restrictions, for our kids that are just returning to school after receiving chemotherapy. You know, they can be pretty extensive. So, every single one of them I review. I'd love to get you numbers on that, but I gave you enough numbers, so I didn't want to, but it's a lot. I also create all of the individualized health plans. Currently, there are 96. Those health plans are the embodiment of those physicians' orders and more. It's how do you implement them in the school? So, the teachers get them, the aides get them, it's, everybody will get them and follow them. It is the, taking the orders and the medical language and terminology and putting it in a manner that can be implemented and understood by anybody, a layperson that reads it. I also do consultation and supporting for IEPs and 504 plans, especially when a healthcare, a health condition is involved. Medical alert responses, medical alert drills, incident reporting review, can flip forward. I won't go, I didn't put these in too much of a particular order, but I am the reporter to public health for all of our numbers that are required, such as immunizations, and any conditions that are on a very specific list of when to report. I also then do some hands-on nursing, where I do some appraisals. I don't do anything unless it's okay with the parent, other than a kid that pops into the health office and the aide has called me and they need a little bit more of an assessment that will help the parent then make a decision, or us make a decision as to whether or not we need to escalate them to a higher level of care. And I'll just kind of let you peruse through the rest of those responsibilities. I do all staff training, so I do have numbers somewhere for that. Let's see.
I think that's like kind of...
Is it lower?
Yeah.
Okay, flipped through. Yep, there we go. So, we have, in the district, 516 staff have completed training. I'll explain what training is. 66 are either haven't done it, they were on leave, I'm working with them to do it. That's a really good number, I will tell you, because that is an increase from prior years because I include all the second shifters, all the custodians, because who knows who's going to encounter a kid that's having an emergency. The three things I focus on are anaphylaxis, diabetic emergencies, and seizure emergencies. The reason I focus on those is because although they may be a low frequency, they are high risk. So, that's my criteria. Either something is very frequent, even if it's a low risk, I need to let people know how to deal with that. What do you do with a kid that has a fever? Send them to the health room, happens all the time. But those three things are, if something goes wrong with a kiddo with those, we could be in a lot of, in a lot of trouble with that kid. So, anaphylaxis, seizure emergencies, and diabetic emergencies. So, everybody's been trained on recognition and the first five minutes before the medical alert team gets there. You can go ahead. Thanks. And also, my collaboration with everybody, obviously, Kari and I talk all the time, the social worker psychologist. I have gone out in the community a little bit in athletics, I don't know if Ryan is here, so the trainer and I work together very closely. And also with the SROs, because they tend to be involved, they tend to be the ears, and CPS at times, when it involves a kid, public health, of course, I know them on a first-name basis. I did reach out to the 4K sites and do all of their training also this year for the first time because they have our kiddos, and they were great, they wanted to know more. So, I'll keep expanding that dialogue with them and assess their needs. The bus company, we are responsible for those kids when they're on the bus, so we need to let them know what their conditions are. And same with food service. We have kiddos that have lots of allergies and lots of special needs with that, and so I spend a lot of time coordinating with them, too. Go ahead. And these are just some of the initiatives. The past two years have been putting together a lot of internal processes, a policy and procedure manual, how to document, teaching a lot of rules and way of doing things. And that's taken quite a bit of time. I would like to move forward now in the upcoming year into more health promotion and safety, mental health care in particular, and... Oh, it's in the, yeah, go ahead. So, we got the grant, so we are like, so, we are so thrilled. And I'll be a part of that along with all of the other student services people, but that is, if you had to ask me what I'm seeing the most of, that concerns me the most, it's the mental health care of the kids because that's what we see, that's driving the numbers in the high school and the middle schools. They need rest because they're having anxiety. They need, they have a lot of symptoms of other things. We see a lot of IBS, we see a lot of stress-related health concerns. Parents are very forthcoming, too. They actually, they make no bones about it, that they, my kid has anxiety, my kid has depression. The kiddo will come right out and say, we have kids that literally sign into the health office and say, "I'm just feeling stressed right now." So, while that's great, we also need to teach a little bit of resilience so that they don't spend 30 minutes in the health office and skip class. So, it's a, it's a fine walk. Risk management is also a big focus, obviously. I'm looking at numbers and I'm making decisions based on what the statistics and the risk are. That's pretty much it, I think. I think there's more future stuff, but you can see that in your slides, and that's all the laws. So, that's all for you. That's just a smattering of what makes me, and I'm the lawyer, right? So, I've got to look at this and keep that in mind. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do have some questions that Tracy sent. If you would like me to answer those, I can read them to you that I have in an email. Any questions? How far do I go over? Oh, you can, I mean... No questions?
No.
All right, then. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Very much appreciate that.
You bet.
All right. So, now, we have a report from the high school around our drug-free school efforts and results over this last year.
We could expressively dance if we could, sir. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll stand. Yes, sir, that is correct. First off, thank you, guys. It's always a pleasure to be here. It's also really a pleasure to start out a night like tonight when I'm actually filled with goosebumps because this room is packed with state champions and students who have succeeded in every way imaginable, from destination imagination to the build moto. Please know your role in supporting our students and hiring people who are awesome superstars, one who just left. That matters, but genuinely, your support for the whole child goes so far in helping us truly live our mission. So, our message tonight is obviously centered around another initiative that you've demonstrated outstanding support. I would like to, Ms. Bowden isn't here tonight, she's currently in Alaska. She really wanted to be here, but please accept her apologies for not being here. It's a pretty valid excuse. But we'll jump in with our first summary of our last year's K-9 searches.
Beep.
All right, we got a beep there, that was good. All right, so, and feel free to stop me because I really, I, on the other end of a lot of information, I'm really on the short end of information. So, ask questions, I'll try to add to it in a couple of places. We do seven K-9 searches a year at the high school. We try to do about one a month. Compared to the other Waukesha schools, and really, I mean, some of the Washington County schools, they range between one and four a year. So, we definitely get really strong support from our police department. They have good relationships with Waukesha County in New Berlin. It really helps arrange for those searches. We do four indoor searches, which is, takes about a class period. We do a hall clearing code, so the students stay in their room, and then we randomly hit as many rooms as we can within a 50-minute period of time. Typically, it ranges between four and eight. It could, it could turn into a situation where there's nothing in any of the rooms, and we're able to hit more rooms. It could turn into a situation where one room gets more attention from Sean and the K-19. That slows the process down. Additionally, we try to hit bathrooms if we can. We know that the kids sometimes stash things in bathrooms, so we go into the bathrooms and kind of go through them as well. During the course of the indoor searches this year, we had six positive indications, which, you know, the officer would say means that the dog hit on something about the backpack that was in the room or the possessions that were in the room. We don't necessarily get to know the story, we don't know why, we don't, we have an idea maybe in our head, but we don't know why. So, we have the conversation that follows with the student that's involved, that's the starting point. This is what we know, doctors about it. Any indication results in a search of possessions, a search of the individual involved by law enforcement, and communication home from both school and also from us. There was zero students found in anything, with anything on them during those searches. During the, I'm sorry, any questions? I talked fast as I go. The three outdoor searches, which are a little harder to arrange because we have anywhere from maybe, maybe three to five K-19s here during those searches. We do three of those, we hit all of the lots as we can, going basically from car to car, doing both visual inspection of the vehicle, and also, the dog does a search of every vehicle. During the searches this year, we had five positive vehicle indications, during which students, passengers in vehicle kind of are all subject to that inquiry. During that time, we found one piece of paraphernalia in a vehicle. I believe it was, I believe it was a, might have been a baby. Any questions on the K-9 searches?
So, you, do you still contact the parents if there was an indication, but nothing found?
Absolutely.
But you do explain that it's just an indication?
Yeah. We don't know why, we don't know why. I share with them what the officers have shared with us. You know, the dog is trained to hit on illicit drugs, means it's possible that there was contact in the car directly, it could have been on their clothes, something could have been in the car, we don't know.
It could have ridden to school with somebody and some on it, yes.
And the officer actually shares that with us, too. If somebody, if somebody had just smoked marijuana and got in the car, and then the dogs hit, it could result in a positive indication. It does give the opportunity for the families, a lot of families are really appreciative that we do it so frequently, gives the families an opportunity to have conversations with their kids on our expense. And, you know, they can blame me for the conversation, but it gives them a chance to dig in and ask questions of who their kids are hitting here, or why the dog hit on the car or the backpack. I think the families have been incredibly supportive. Sounds like a question.
I just appreciate that. I think it's important that parents know, even if it's something innocent or relatively innocent, at least they can take whatever actions they feel necessary.
And even when it's innocent, it's indicative of a pattern of behavior that parents need to be aware of.
They might be starting to hang with the wrong people or something like that.
Absolutely. And a lot of the parents will say things like that, you know, "I had questions about such and such, and I can't comment on other students." But when they're starting to ask those questions, they're thinking the right thoughts. All right, next one, I didn't beep, can we back up a little bit? I just want to review, okay. Beep.
Ah, nice.
All right, so this is just some trend data for our K-9 searches. I think that anything in a vacuum doesn't have context, so you can just kind of see over time, kind of where we're at. We do try to do seven K-9 searches a year. You can see, I think, two years ago, we were not able to arrange, we had one that got canceled the morning of, stuff like that. But we do try to hit the seven, I think it's a good threshold for us, it really lets the students know that it's something that can happen anytime, and it's good. You can see the indication, trend line, it's fairly consistent, this year was a little down from the previous year. Something I learned this year from, I think it was one of the Waukesha County Sheriff's Office officers, is that we were kind of in our heads wondering, with the way that the drug use with students and the community is changing, from being just marijuana, to now they're vaporizing it as well in vaping devices, we were wondering if the K-9 doctors were getting on that. The information we have is that it does. And that came up through one of the outdoor K-9 searches, it was a good conversation. And you can see that we had one positive indication.
All right. Brings us to our random drug testing results. So we continue to test 15 students every month over the 10 months of school. Within those random drug tests, we do include the two screens or panels for performance-enhancing drugs as well. What we saw this year was a total of 16 positive test indications out of all of the 150. One of those positive indications was if a student refuses to take the test, that by our board policy indicates a positive indication. So again, they're still held to that standard, because you need to kind of have that stopgap for students simply just saying that, "Nope, I'm not going to cooperate with this." They are signed or they are enrolled into this because they are participating in a voluntary activity as a part of our school system, so we have the right to do so. We did this year have 10 students test positive because of nicotine only, three students tested positive for cannabinoids only, and then two students tested positive for both nicotine and the cannabinoids. As you can see what that looks like in our typical test data, we are seeing some changes here. As we'll kind of get into the trends a little bit more here, nicotine has certainly skyrocketed and exploded over the last two years, largely because of the prevalence of vape pens exploding onto the market, and I would say, kind of society's maybe lagging a little bit in the education around, "This is still dangerous. This is still a highly addictive drug that we're putting into our kids' bodies." We're marketing things in basically grape flavor, strawberry flavor, in very kid-centered approaches, and we aren't educating students about how dangerous this is and how early you can become addicted to this. So our data kind of helps frame that story a little bit. This was last year's, and then the next slide kind of highlights it a little bit differently. Again, what we've seen in the past three-year pattern, 2016, we were just starting to see vapes show up on the school grounds. And then 2017, 18, we saw a huge skyrocket, and again, it continues to climb. What really alarms us about these numbers, I don't believe we are certainly doing a great job catching students who are using it. As you watch YouTube, or you see the different games that students all across America are playing about the challenge of trying to vape in a classroom, it's blowing up on the internet, it's all over. I would be naive to think it wouldn't happen in Mesquite, so we're trying to educate ourselves. We'll talk more about that as the program ends, or our presentation ends. The other thing that's really changing is the face of drug use. So again, what used to be a student who was going to consume marijuana, would have a baggie of marijuana and a pot pipe or something that they would smoke it, it has now become very condensed into vape packages. Students have the ability to hide it much easier, because again, it doesn't have that same stench or strong smell as today, baggage, a baggie, or some other paraphernalia. What is in a dab pen or a vape pod is totally sealed. So again, to us, you don't notice the smell in any way, shape, or form, or they can vape in a bathroom, and that smell dissipates much quicker than had a student actually smoked a product previously. So again, we can see last year, we had 12 incidents that were specifically related to THC with our vape pens. So out of that, I believe it was 63 total incidents we had in vaping, 12 of those incidents involved a vape pen that tested positive for THC. The other thing we realized is, we are kind of on the front side for pushing this question. So as we reached out to many of our surrounding districts and our peers that asked the question, so when you catch a student with a vape, do you actually destroy, for lack of a better term, the vape pod and test it to see if it has THC in it? In the vast majority of our counterparts, we're not doing that. We're grateful for our PD's willingness and cooperation around that. Any single vape pen that we find, we run it through the THC test, so we can ensure that if our students are using, we want to know what's in there. So though we've seen a skyrocket in our numbers around that, we're actually proud about that, because we're not turning a blind eye to the challenge that's at hand. We want to inform our parents, we want to be able to communicate transparently, not only was your child vaping, they were vaping THC. They've accessed a dab pen or something else that isn't just the water vapor that sometimes they tell their parents, "Well, it's just water, it's harmless." Well, there's a whole lot of other things that can mix in that are highly addictive and extremely dangerous to our students.
I want to add a little bit to that, too. That conversation with a parent where we tested the vaping cartridge and there wasn't THC in it, is still another segue into a conversation where the parents need to know that it could have that in it, because a lot of the parents aren't savvy on what's going on with the 17, 18, 19-year-olds that are using these vapes. I've had a lot of really good conversations, and I think we're able to share some resources with the families that, when those questions come up. And this is just, what we're seeing is also a shift because of the availability of vaping devices and the accessibility, because they taste like bubble gum or grape. Of the 63 incidences this year of students being found with vapes, 17 of them were freshmen. So it's a changing demographic in the sense that you have older kids buying these for younger kids, and they're carrying around something for a variety of reasons, but it's the accessibility to young kids is strong. And I don't think that the 15-year-olds are able to really frame what they could potentially do into their body. Wanted to share one other piece, too, with that, and again, partnership with the PD around this issue's been really strong. I have a friend who's an associate principal in another district, and they're not getting the same support, and it's a frustration point for them. Mesquite just passed an ordinance also this year in December, that students are now being cited, actually anybody under the age of 18 on school property is being cited for having vaping or vaping-related paraphernalia, whether it's positive for drugs or not. So if a student has a vape in their backpack, it's just nicotine, it's a $155 ticket. And that message is a strong reason for students to choose otherwise.
On the incidents that we have on the vaping, are we using rose cranks? Or is that, has that been, being as we're in the vaping side now, outside of the, is the rose cranks working out?
So, we're getting to that, it's a great question, because we're still struggling with, the punitive measures we have aren't changing the behavior. So how do we shift it to the educational and restorative approaches? How do we help the family and the student understand the dangers around this, and continue to build on that partnership to give students the tools to say no, and understand how this is harming them? Where I will say we were challenged, is we didn't necessarily see, there's currently a one-day suspension for vaping, so getting a student to voluntarily agree to access rose cranks requires some good family support, to say, "Yes, I acknowledge this is a serious problem, and I want my child to." Where we've been able to utilize that as a restorative reinforcement, is a student who has a more significant offense, such as was caught under the influence of alcohol or drugs, which would be a five-day, that we can reduce that amount of time and have them missing less class time, in exchange to say, "You will be engaging in some restorative educational journey around your use." And with that one-day suspension, not many students and families have jumped at that and said, "Yes, I'll voluntarily do this." It's a service we offer, and we'll get to as the second offense occurs. It is something that now the length of time out of school has increased to a level where families are more open to saying, "Ooh, this is really serious," and their engagement with that opportunity seems to be increasing.
On the note with that amount of incidents where the freshman, and I know you're still trying to wrap your arms around this, is it, do we have any data on Lake D'Antonin and Mesquite Lakes, I mean, I don't, what we do now, but, you know, as far as the eighth grade and the seventh grade, because maybe there needs to be a shift to, maybe you're doing all you can, and we need to shift to give support to those two middle schools where they use the same tools that you're doing, so.
And they've been great, Mrs. Olson has been great, about looking at this problem and truly taking that systems approach. As we've realized that, and that was one of our first questions when we meet with a student who's vaping, "When did you start doing this?" And as we started to compile that anecdotal data, we're also trying to track and take a look at, our middle school administrators are looking at their own internal data, how many instances are they seeing? And we have some action plans to come around. How do we really start to address this issue before it becomes an issue for students? Because once they're using it, what research is saying all across the country is, it is extremely hard to stop this. Nicotine is so highly addictive, that in that adolescent brain, if you start vaping at 12-years-old, it is a challenge to get that student to break that pattern.
One last question on this, and thank you. Of those freshmen, just out of curiosity, have we, and if we haven't, I'd like to eventually know, are there any escorts, or are these, that WIA curriculum code violations is well, or is the majority out of that and not in that WIA field?
So what we're seeing is our students that we're finding under, utilizing devices such as this, are usually not connected in our building in a core curriculum. So, that's...
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I think we hit on those. The next slide is really, again, this is the face where the number of parents we have conversations with, where they're like, "I had no idea what this looked like, I just, I saw something in my son's room, and I thought it was a USB drive, I had no idea what this was." Marketing continues to change this, so many kids say, "It looks really cool, it lights up." There are billions of dollars in this industry, and they're certainly trying hard to capitalize on getting a group of consumers utilizing these devices. So, our goal is to continue to try to create ways to educate our families about what to look for with your kids. Rose cranks update kind of connects into the question you asked, which is a great question. We continue to be extremely appreciative for the partnership of allowing rose cranks to come in a day a week. They continue to provide what I would describe restorative support to our students, helping them understand why they are making the decisions they're making to utilize, and how do we get to the root cause of that? And how do we help give them the, maybe the courage and the confidence to make the right decisions under peer pressure situations? And also, how do we educate the families and help them, and connect them to resources outside of our building as well? Just grateful for that partnership. I stand behind suspensions and detentions don't change lives, but it's the conversations we have, and it's the additional supports and education that we can provide in that partnership, that really is our best chance to impact every kid who's struggling with stuff like this. We did see a slight increase, rose cranks has been good about trying to create additional group approach efforts, because as the numbers increase, and as we get more students who are agreeing to participate because of a vaping offense, we're going to need to become more efficient in how we provide that support. And the question of, is it time to start exploring, how do we maybe expand that to maybe younger levels, or even the RDT as well? Is that something that is considered for eighth-grade students in core curriculums or questions like that? There's been good conversations and questions being asked. Other efforts, again, these kind of decisions don't function in a vacuum, and I've really, we've been extremely grateful for your approach to continue to push the limits and say, "How else can we identify? How else can we find students who might be struggling with healthy decisions and arm them with the tools they need to make strong social decisions in that?" We realized that we had some issues happening at our school dances, you empowered us and supported our work to get in random breath lizing. Since that has happened, we have not had a single positive alcohol-related incident at our dances. Last year was the first year we made the decision to require transportation to our prom event, and again, the outcome from that was extremely positive. Our students actually appreciated it, and the number of families who called back and said, "I am grateful to know exactly where my child is, and to know that they're not being transported by a different group of students, or other families maybe making some decisions that could have an impact on their own child's safety." So, that was something that I know had some ripples, and your support was greatly appreciated on that. We continue to look at, how do we impact and better utilize rose cranks? And then again, adding the support from our Mesquite Police Department has been great.
So, some next steps, and we've kind of alluded to these, like, as we've gone through this throughout. I think, it was said earlier, maybe you're doing everything you can already. I don't believe that, and I don't think anybody in our team believes that, I think we really have the approach that we're always trying to find another way to get better at what we're doing. I think, one thing that we have found helps quite a bit is educating our staff, because our staff is the front line of what they're seeing and what they're hearing from students, and they can only hear and see what they know, if they know what they're looking for. So we're planning to do some education for our staff, some look for some things that we're hearing, maybe partnering with our SRO to build that out. We have in the past shared out a lot of information in a couple different venues to the parents, and I think we're going to continue to do that this coming year. We have some ideas, I'm creating a presentation so that they can see what their students may have in their room. I think the videos, you mentioned the videos of students trying to take a challenge to vape in a classroom, students are also trying to vape in their houses when their parents turn their back. There's chargers plugged in their kitchen walls that they don't recognize what it is. And I think that we have a lot of insight to maybe share home with that. We've talked about maybe on the Welcome Back to School Day, which is early September, maybe doing a vaping 101 class, we have a captive audience that day with parents in the building. We have 400-plus new freshmen coming into the building that are going to be maybe exposed to some things that older students are doing, and we could lead a class that day, two sessions, we have, you know, front and back to catch both parent groups that are coming later or earlier. And I think that'd be a great opportunity to start some conversations with parents on that. And I think the final thing is, and Todd uses this phrase with me the other day, and it really stuck, I think, anything that's educational in this manner, where there's peer pressure involved, is going to have to be repeated and it's touching. We're not the coolest, and I have to remind myself, I'm not the coolest person to the student that's in front of me anymore. It breaks my heart to imagine that I'm not, because I think I am, even to my daughter, I'm not anymore. But I think their peer pressure and the influence of their peers is so strong, that the student is going to have to hear multiple times what it is they're doing to their body and why it's a negative in their life. I just read a study the other day that they're starting to link vaping to seizures and to strokes. It's an unregulated product by the FDA. Over 50% of vaping juice that's tested, that's labeled nicotine-free, has nicotine in it. So, like, the parents who think, "Well, my kid is vaping water," they have no idea about that extra information. So I think as many opportunities as we can share that information with students as young as possible, and get the information to the parents as early as we can, has got to make a difference. And that's, those are some of our next steps.
Questions? So, I don't know if the board appreciates Dr. Paul Thompson and the staff for attacking this, having these fierce conversations where you have to, just please, let us know. If you need additional resources, you know, what items can we take back, either now or in the future, to help grow that? Because we're learning as well, and we really appreciate the transparency and bring this through, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
There was one tool that our safety team looked at this year, we spent a lot of time getting prices and measuring up spaces, but there's a new technology that actually detects vaping, so we can put it in bathrooms and such, but after pricing out just the high school, I think it was $100,000. So I think the manufacturer kind of has a niche right now, and others will probably catch on, and maybe eventually, a few years from now, it becomes more affordable to put it in the middle schools and the high school. Additionally, too, we're working together with our district technology team and getting a reporting app to help, because what we're finding out is, we have a lot of great kids in our building who do not approve of this behavior, and yet they are uncomfortable walking back to their classroom and saying, "Hey, I walked in the bathroom, there's just three kids in the bathroom vaping." When we get tips, and we do get quite a few, our numbers are so high because we do have a lot of great students that do report it, and then we're able to follow up real quickly. But if we can continue to find avenues to more quickly and more confidentially empower our students to use their voice and say, "Hey, I was just in this bathroom at this time," with our camera systems, we are able to quickly identify who was in there and follow up. And as our students feel that message of, "If I'm doing this here, I'm going to get caught," that also helps to dissuade those behaviors. So, we're excited about that app coming forward, so.
Jeremiah, if one of these systems was installed in the bathroom, and somebody goes and they vape, how soon does it detect that?
From what I understand, it immediately detects as soon as it comes in.
About five, 10 seconds, like, right away?
Yeah, within contact, and then it sends a notification to whatever network you want, if it's all the administrators or something.
We'd have a very precise timeframe, and with the camera systems, assuming everything's synced up properly.
I believe it's a bit untested yet, and it sounded like there was some hidden cost as we looked into it, that again, new technology that I wouldn't say is maybe to the level of security we need yet, but it's exciting to think that they're heading down that path.
Please keep your eye on it, because that's something...
Yeah, we were super excited till we seen the price tick.
Like you said, $100,000...
Well, thank you very much, appreciate your report. We're going to move the Student Nutrition Committee report down a bit, we're going to go right to the 2018-19 Board Goal Updates. Jim is here. And so as you recall, during the committee of the whole, we gave an update on the, on one of our board goals, which related to our master planning. Another goal that we had was the Responsible Resource Stewardship. So this is under the 18-19 Board Goals Update. And that related to assist in and promote the development of strategic community partnerships that support alternative revenue avenues and student experience opportunities. So Julie, if you want to summarize the first part, which related to the alternative revenue, and then Kristi and Jim are here to share the second part, which is the Student Experience Opportunities.
Sure. So in Board Docs, I just put a recap in of the different fundraising efforts that the district undertook in partnership with community as well as staff within the district. So again, talking about the fully funding the turf football field and being able to capture donations and working with our Gridiron Group and Youth Football Group and other members of the community, receiving enough funds to be able to install the turf fields for the 2018-19 football season. And then working, our activities director, Ryan McMillan, worked very hard to secure the funds to put the scoreboard up in the, in the stadium as well. The scoreboard, if you've noticed, not only has been used for football, but now has, we've had a movie night and some other activities where the community has been able to enjoy that. So again, through the efforts of the community as well as staff here within the system, fundraised to be able to put those things in for our students and the community. And then finally, the district did receive the $350,000 in donations for the pool, which helped to trigger the pool project. And the board supported that project, the use of district funds and fund balance. So we were able to get the new pool that was up and running for this year as well. So again, just some examples of the start of the alternative revenue process and as we continue on our master planning process in the future, looking at how we can apply some of these alternative means and fundraising means to support future projects as well.
Any questions about that? All right. So the second part, Kristi and Jim, the Student Experience Opportunities and those partnerships.
So for the last two years, we've been working on increasing work-based learning experiences for students and developed a college career and work-based learning coordinator position, which Jim is serving in the role. Our focus was to increase student experiences both in the school, so where employers can come in and work with students and teachers, as well as to get students out of the building into authentic work-based learning experiences. So we developed the six levels of experience, which we've shared with you over the course of the last year, which kind of just break down small commitments from employers all the way up to like capstone experience, which is where they would host a student on the job site. And so Jim's going to just talk a little bit about over the last year, some of the growth that we've seen in this program.
And just with the six levels of experience that we just handed out, our Level Six Career Internship and Level Four is a lot of where the numbers are coming from. As we started to track this data, those are the first ones that we can identify and we're working on ways to track Level Three, Two, and One. Number of students in a Level Six Career Internship in the 18-19 school year was 62 students. We are projected currently to have 96 students in the 19-20 school year. I would say that number is going to increase or decrease by about 10 students depending on placement and then also interest in different situations that align with business partners and our students' availability as they grow. Number of students in a Level Four Experience in our Micro Internship, 18-19, we had five students that participated in the Building Trades Activity. This year, we had 49 students participate in three different career clusters, the Health Science, the Building Trade Consortium, as well as an opportunity over at Impro where they went through STEM and Engineering, Business Management, and Manufacturing. Partnerships, in 18-19, we had about 55 partners. So usually our numbers correlate between the amount of students in a Level Six Experience and/or a Level Four. Some employers take on more students than one, so usually that number's a little less. And looking at that 55, that from 18-19 is just a Level Six Experience. We weren't tracking the Level Fours at that time. 19-20, it's to be determined pending the placement of our students, which we are currently working on. So I would reflect the number somewhere 86 in that ballpark range or more just in a Level Six plus what we had helping us out with a Level Four. Plans to grow partnerships, we plan on maintaining our current relationships with our employers. We're currently working on an onboarding slash information folder where we can explain more in depth, there's six levels of experience, how people can get involved, what our Connect Academy and our levels of experience are, so that A, the people we sit down and meet with can understand a little more in depth, but B, we have larger organizations that a lot of people have different roles that they can take that information and pass it along, so we can bridge into more career clusters within one organization. And then LinkedIn is becoming a large tool, trying to post all the relationships we have with our business partners, the success that our students are having, so that people can start to see in the business world the opportunities that are there with the Muskego Norway School District and our students to partner. We are working with the Rockshire County Business Alliance. We are currently collaborating with other school districts. So the Micro Internship, Level Four, we are in a consortium with Greendale, Greenfield, Whitnell, Ingle Creek, and Franklin have joined as well and some other schools where we're all partnering to work with the Building Trades at one time to bring in more students and then more employers at the same time. So continue to work with other school districts. And then cold calling is still a strong tool as we find students that have interests that we may not currently have a partnership in. Just going through LinkedIn and other avenues and finding employer and just giving them a call really starts to build a relationship and get students placed. Questions on that?
So we have an intern at the ESC right now, actually working with Kate Brown in the marketing and PR avenue. So it's pretty cool. It's neat to see students kind of branching out. It's not just the traditional areas and really, really trying to find ways to have students experience what a work life would look like and different job opportunities. Awesome. So thank you for your efforts to expand that, grow it, and really articulate it and get it out there so people understand it's for all students.
I just wanted to add that this summer, we had a Level Four Experiences in several different pathways. It was basically a week-long experience for students. They did 45 hours either rotating through or experiencing on-the-job type activities. Impro is a really strong partner and they sent kids through various departments, not just manufacturing, but IT, HR, marketing. So they are showing to be a very strong partner in this work and they would like to continue to grow. We also had a healthcare academy where students visited two high, schools of higher ed. They went to Marquette's Nursing School and then they went to WCTC to see the two-year programs. They visited Community Memorial Hospital and shadowed through different departments there, freighter off of Moreland.
Off of Moreland Reserve Clinic, they did a full immersion where they were with a nurse, a doctor, the radio, radiologist, technician for about four hours. And they just cycle the kids through the actual, what their day is in and out.
We also brought in our own district CPR trainers who train all of our athletic coaches and we CPR trained the students as well and paid for their certification for that. So it was a really cool week-long experience for that group, which per the student survey showed to be really popular and we'll bring that back next year and grow more.
Any questions? Well, thank you so much. Again, appreciate it. The next goal for our system was to participate in the process of researching and considering a Muskego Norway Educational Foundation. And Julie led that effort and I'll give a summary.
Yep. So back in January, we met with, or just to talk a little bit about the opportunity for supporting a foundation. So again, the foundation would be something that would be a separate entity established outside of the district, but with our support. We met with a couple of school districts who talked about their either success or failures with the foundation. And the one that we found had the greatest success shortly after we met with them, then had turnover within their organization and we don't really know where it's at. So what we've discovered is that a foundation is very hard to find the right people to establish a board, to establish an executive director, but still keep yourself somewhat out of it. We also found that when you, when you create these separate entities, you have different fundraising opportunities, however, you have very little say in how those funds that are fundraised are spent. And so what we found is there could be competing activities with fundraising that we would do within our own system and what we're trying to do with getting our alumni on board and things like that. So what we've decided through, you know, conversations with other school districts and just looking internally, that we would like to continue looking at ways to fundraise and do alternative revenue projects internally, but not have a separate foundation for those funds. So our recommendation is that we studied it, we thought about it, and we are going to probably pass supporting that project moving forward.
Any questions, comments, or concerns with that?
So the difference really between the two, and I'm going way back in.
Sure.
When I was on Franklin's Foundation Board, was that they really were kind of doing fundraising and things like that for in-classroom type things. When we're looking at doing fundraising in this district, it's more for like global type initiatives, right?
It could, yeah, it could be either, either or.
Okay.
But it's the foundation to decide and that was one of our struggles is our focus, yes, is on those bigger construction things, you know, when you think about the turf and the pool and those types of things.
Have we had any, any teachers come and say, "Hey, it would be really great. I would like to do this project." And maybe it's just a one-time project or something like that where we've had to turn them away where a foundation would have been helpful? Or do we just not have the need as well?
Well, we do have a policy around crowdfunding, for example. So we do have a couple of, you know, like, like coaches or advisors or people who might want to raise funds through that for small little projects that they might want to do themselves. And so they go through a process to have, to go out and kind of raise funds through that crowdsourcing kind of opportunity. But for the most part, we've been able to support and find ways to, you know, support what we can.
So it totally makes sense to do what you're doing then because if there's just not that banging on the door need for it, it's a lot of work. You're right, the turnover, the executive director position, either makes it or breaks it.
And what we've found also, I mean, just thinking about our district, our PTOs are very supportive and do a lot of that work anyway. And our booster club's the same thing. So we feel that they're providing the support that the foundation probably would have for some of those other projects.
Okay. Any other comments?
Then just as per usual, we have the contributions to profession. So thank you, Courtney, working with your team on the Always Actions for the What's Right in Education Conference, which is coming up the end of this month. So I appreciate you extending yourself that way. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Item four, public comment. Just to reiterate, the board invites public comment on each agenda item at a time. The agenda item is brought before the board for discussion or consideration and then all public comment will be completed for the specific agenda item before any board discussion is held on that item. And I believe this and why that will eventually be posted. And we have a.
Yes.
So, and so just want to comment on that. And then item five, other reports, President's Report.
I'm sorry. I forgot to let Julie talk about her Student Nutrition Committee report. I'm really sorry.
I skipped it. I know. It's a short one, but I wanted to be able to get Jim and I'm really sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, we should go back. Yes. No, take your, however, you need, back to our superintendent's report. Go ahead.
We have a Student Nutrition Committee that was formed and again, you approved the wellness policy for student nutrition a year and a half ago, I believe. And so the work of the committee is required by the federal government if we participate in the federal program. So far, K8 schools, we, we have to have this committee. It is open to parents. We do put something on the parent newsletter to welcome them. We've had one parent that's been a regular on the committee. It's a small group, representatives from a couple of the schools. Ryan participates in it. And we do, what we did this year was we did an assessment of each of our schools based on the Alliance for a Healthier Generation Assessment. And we looked at things like our policy, the different nutrition services, health and fay ad, physical activity in the classroom and employee wellness. And you look at where you are in comparison to where they rate you. And then based on the assessment at each school, you develop an action plan for the district to determine how to move the district forward in the area of student wellness. And so from that committee's work and through the assessment process, I put in Board Docs the areas of focus that we came up with. Again, we probably won't tackle all of these in one year, but these were different areas that we feel are the most prior, are the highest priority for us. So one, how food is being used as a reward or incentive in the classroom. There's very different opinions on how to use that and what to use for rewards and incentives, candy versus non-visual items.
Correct.
Student fundraising as it relates to health and wellness. So what are we doing from a fundraising perspective? So again, that's working a lot with the outside groups because we work with outside groups on fundraising as well. How much time is adequate, how much time for students to eat lunch? So again, this is an area that we continue to look at. However, I feel with the transitions with the referendum project and having the cafeteria now separate from the gym, with the exception of Lakeview, unfortunately, we have, we don't have as much of an issue with that. So we continue to monitor, especially at Lakeview, to make sure that we're adequately providing time for students to eat. Different opportunities for physical activity breaks in the classroom, so how our staff working with students in the classroom, especially at the K8s when they're kind of all in one classroom all day, and what types of physical activities could be happening. We don't have a current breakfast program, but if we did, what it could potentially look like and the costs around that. And then how we're engaging parents in student nutrition wellness. So those are the six different areas that we'll be creating an action plan on for next year and in years to come. And then every year we'll report out on where we ended up based on those areas of focus for the year.
Is it, so that breakfast program, would that be just specific to K through eight?
It would be only because.
Because that's the program that.
We have something, we have à la carte at the high school. We offer breakfast opportunities. It could change slightly depending on, you know, how healthy or not healthy things.
Well, because, so, so, so the high school's not, so the, the requirements are different for the high school, right? Because we opted out.
Correct.
And then, so if they had a Warrior Cafe at Muskego Lakes and they sold, that would, I mean, that could be what you're talking about.
You could look at, so school breakfast can be handled a number of different ways and they are, it is a program like the lunch program that would be reimbursed through the government, the federal government. You can offer it in the classroom, you can offer it before school, you can offer cold or hot. So like you can literally have the first period, and I'm not saying that we're doing this, so if there's anybody, any teachers listening, we're not implementing breakfast in the classroom necessarily, but you could. Like first hour, you take a list of what everybody wants, you have three different options and you can bring breakfast right into the classroom for kids to eat. In my previous district, we had a high free and reduced population and so we did implement a cold breakfast in the classroom because it was necessary for a lot of our students. And we found that there is a significant change in behavior as a result of it. But there are so many different opportunities for it, but you could.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the superintendent's report is.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. All right. Onto, okay, we reiterated what our public comment is, onto President's Report. Just, I know Brett, he can, he'll comment on what he's sent out and thank you for that. Tracy did send out, I forwarded to the board, her CISA One update and, you know, she is encouraging us to follow that and look at their seminars as well, as they have like teacher recruitment, National Convention for Personalized Learning and other items that complement what the WSB has as well. So I'm going to sort of offer some links and stuff as well as prepared. So, and that is all I have for the President's Report. Any other reports?
I guess nobody's jumping and I'll start. Everybody should have received the email I sent out, attended the WSB Equity Symposium and Leadership Conference this past weekend. Do you want me to read it out or is everybody going to go through?
No, I think, we appreciate the detail you gave us in writing. So, I think in your, yes, so.
The one thing I will add is please check out that Spurs episode, America to Me, that was really informative, some of the problems that some of the districts with a diverse population are going through.
Was it the video or the?
The documentary, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's 12-part.
The hour, the hour one, right?
Right. Yeah, okay. 12-part, the first one's free, the rest I think you have to have a membership. But it gives you a good idea.
I have one.
Sure, I'm happy.
I did have one question.
Yes, sir.
So are they going to, do you know if the WS, that WASB is going to offer that Economics Wisconsin again?
Yeah, I'm sure. They, it's like every three months, three or four months.
Is that, that is a good, that is a good, if there's a board member who would want to attend that, that is a good seminar to attend.
The Economic.
So Economics Wisconsin, that's a good.
It's a two-day.
Yeah, I think that, I don't think that WASB.
Headed up at Lambeau. I don't think it's, I don't think it's part of WASB.
I think, I think they do have kind of a tie-in. They, the WSC, WSB kind of supports it directly or anything, but.
Right, but they kind of, you could go through there, right?
Yeah. Usually with, usually with these scholarships they have with that, it ends up being almost no cost.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, it was very informative when I went through it.
Yeah, it was a very.
I'm thinking of doing it again the next year.
I think Google it or we can try to find out, but if there, that would be a definite excellent seminar to attend, so. Any other board member reports?
Hi.
Hi, I just want to, I talked to Chris about a month ago about nominating businesses or partnering with the district for the WSB newsletter about a month ago, and then they sent it out again. So I've been working with Jim basically, and I'm also going to reach out to Ryan to make sure there's anyone else, and we turn it in August 16th, so. A nice list, we pick five each year, and they'll list them on their website, and give us an award to get to them. Our partnership.
We've done that with Info in the Past, remember, a couple years ago?
I didn't see anything last couple years, because they haven't listed on the website.
Thank you for.
Yeah, thank you.
To get to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, it's a lot. Well, thank you. Any other board member reports? No, and we have no committee reports. On to item six, resolution action items. Additional AS, S6A, additional open enrollment seats.
Motion to approve four open enrollment seats for five-year-old kindergarten for the 2019-2020.
So moved.
So there's a memo in your packet that just gives you the background on what we brought forward to the board in January for approval, and we're just comfortable right now bringing forward those additional kindergarten seats. And it is likely we'll be coming back in August again, once we have firmer numbers related to our kindergarten enrollment, to see whether or not we can even open up more seats. But at this point, we do feel comfortable with four seats at the kindergarten level.
Thank you. Any comments? Very none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution carries. Item 6B, 2019-2020 preliminary budget.
Motion to approve the 2019-2020 preliminary budget as presented.
So moved.
Discussion.
Okay, so the governor did sign a budget, which is very exciting for us, business department, probably not for anyone else. What I did include for you, the first document, the comparison of the Joint Finance Committee and governor's budget, I just wanted to go over that briefly. And what I tried to do was show where the budget was at when the Joint Finance Committee approved it and we spoke last about it, and then how the governor's budget changed it. So he did not change the per pupil increase from the revenue limit perspective, that remained the same. And so if you recall, when we talk about the revenue limit increase, that's the pie that we're able to look at, how much we're getting in state aid and taxes. So as that goes up and that pie grows, depending on what happens with state aid, that can impact the tax levy. What he did change was the per pupil categorical aid increase, which is outside of that pie. So that's simply additional revenue that the district has that can help support the budget in other ways. So that comparison document was just to show that it did give us additional funding in the amount of about $270,000, however, it did not have an impact on the tax levy as we built the budget. So the next document then, for your review, if you want to go to the governor-approved budget, or the 2019-20 governor-approved budget. So again, just going back through the same numbers, what we're looking at as far as enrollment for the purpose of this budget is a flat enrollment. The per pupil increase for the revenue limit of $175, and this is all listed in that blue column on that attachment. The per pupil categorical aid at $742 a student, which is up from the $654 a student, we had this in the 1818 year. We're looking at a 3% equalized valuation growth, but again, that number will change, and we'll know that number on October 1st. So what I'm showing here is our general fund revenues and expenditures, and the surplus that we now have as a result of the increase in the categorical aid. So if you remember before, we presented a balanced budget. However, with that increase, it did provide us with additional funding. And in the write-up in board docs, I did talk a little bit about that additional funding. And as we monitor class sizes, specifically at Lakeview, and then also our special education caseloads, as well as IEP needs, there is a possibility that we're looking at adding a kindergarten teacher, a special education teacher, and two special education aides. And so those funds could be used to support the cost of those staffing positions. And then just going down, again, looking, and we'll look a little bit more in-depth at the tax levy. The tax levy is anticipated to go down by 0.58%. Any questions on that information?
So the, the tax levy decrease, that's without us making any modifications like what we've done in the past?
Correct. So if you want to click on the 2019-20 preliminary tax levy document, again, this shows the history of the last two years, and then in the blue is the preliminary that we would be looking at. So what you'll see here, a couple of things. You'll, you'll notice that the general fund tax levy has increased, and it looks like it's increased significantly from the previous year. If you remember, when we talk about our general fund tax levy, funds 10 and 41 together go hand in hand. So if I'm not putting that money in the capital expansion fund in Fund 41, I can use it in Fund 10 and vice versa. So you'll see last year, our general fund tax levy was 26 million, but our Fund 41 was over 2 million. This year, we're going back, because we're not doing those same projects that we've done in the past, we dropped that by, down to 750,000 in Fund 41, so that just simply puts more money into Fund 10 because they go hand in hand. The same thing, you'll notice Fund 38 is slightly less than it's been in previous years, and that's because we're paying off that Fund 38 debt that we had. So this will be the last year that we have a Fund 38 levy. In the future, that Fund 38 levy goes away, those funds can then be used to pay for things in the general fund budget. So again, that's one pot of money that we're able to use interchangeably, depending on how we think to do that. The referendum-approved debt service, so again, these are our debt payments for the following year. What that does is that brings our levy to a negative 0.58%. If we so choose, we can have less of a levy. It could still be decreasing, but we could levy more in the referendum line item in the amount of about $170,000. So again, putting more money into Fund 39 fund balance to use to make future debt payments or to start building up that fund to do a defeasance in the future. And we can, we'll talk about the defeasance in a future item, but if we levied about 170,000 more, our tax levy would still go down 0.05%. It'd kind of be consistent with where we've been the past couple of years, and it allows us to put some money aside for additional payment of debt early. So Brett, we have that flexibility, it's just up to the board what you want to do with the levy.
And we should discuss that when we get a little closer to.
Well, you'd want to discuss it now for the preliminary and make that decision for what we want to move forward with, and then we can make any adjustments to the meeting after the annual meeting, but this would be what would go forward at the annual meeting.
What is our, do we have a, our fund 80? So is, is there a balance in that, or is that?
In what fund, I'm sorry?
Fund 80?
We do still have a balance in Fund 80, and we can, if you want to click on the Budget Adoption Workbook, it's up to you, but that has all of the funds listed.
The only thing I'm asking is, is can, can we pay, you know, the SROs under Fund 80? Because, you know, I was reading up on that, and that seems very clear, and I was talking to other board, board presidents, they're starting to do that, or looking into doing that.
We can look into it. So if you remember, when we had like the PAC in Fund 80, the rule became unless it was very clear what was specifically community service, and what was specifically being done in schools during school time, it's very hard to distinguish, and so you cannot put, just say 50% is Fund 80, 50% is Fund 10. So in order to fall under community service, whatever you're paying for has to be open to everyone in your community. So our SROs would have to be supporting every student in the community, which I don't think that's the role while they're here within our system.
Because they're, you know, we don't need to, I don't know if we need to debate this now, but, but looking at the contract of the SROs, I mean, they pretty much can call upon the police department anytime and pull them out of the school. So to me, that means they're.
They can get a second opinion.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that means they're like, I mean, they're available to the community first as a priority. So that seems, that's community service, and, and we're, so if we're, yeah, just something to think about, because I was, I was trying to sift through that, and I was just looking through some emails from, from other boards, and I just got one last night, and it, so if you could.
We do have a fund balance of about, at the end of the 1920 year, because right now, we're only using that fund balance to pay down the cost of Lakeview for keeping the pool open.
Right.
That's really the only thing. And we have about 82,000 in there now. At the end of the year, we will have about 12,000 of expenses, we'll be down to about 70,000. So there are funds available without having to levy additional funds, but then we need to consider how we're supporting open spend.
Yeah, I'm just looking like what would Fund 80 be best used, if it can be used for the SROs, and we put our extra dollars in there, and then what does that do to our overall?
I see what you're saying.
Posture, right, yeah, so, okay.
Because we can move the cost, part of it into Fund 80, levy that separately.
Exactly.
Still keep the levy going down, and then open up funds in Fund 10 for other things.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you.
I will look into that.
So I, I like everything I see except for the student population.
Okay.
They were down 42 last year. I'm not sure what we did from 17 to 18, or 16 to 17. I think we've been, I think we've been going down each year. So I'm a little bit concerned with the 47, 26.
Okay.
Because I don't know how many students it would take to bring that levy to a positive number.
So if I run the numbers, because it's a three-year rolling average, if we dropped 40, I'm going to go even 50 students. Just need to find my refresh button. It has no impact on the levy. So we would have to be, we would have to drop more than 50 FTEs before we would start seeing an impact.
Is that an average over the three years or one year or so?
So that's if we, if we dropped 50 this year, the impact that it would have on us.
Oh, plus the additional.
Plus the 42 you passed year.
Yeah, so that's already factored in, so that the, the formula itself factors in the last three years. So those are already rolled forward, it's just a matter of what we're doing for current year. And I could look at.
I don't think we're going to lose more than 50, but I'm just.
Right, and that's something that, again, we can continue to monitor as we, August, we usually get a few more kindergarten, K-4, last-minute enrollments, and other things like that, so. Yeah, we can, I mean, we can put in whatever number you would like to see, and we can adjust according. But I think even the 50 is going to have little impact.
So then what do we have to have the board decide tonight?
So what the board would be deciding, so two things, so you would be approving, if you go to the budget, I'm sorry, what is it, Budget Adoption Workbook, and this is that really ugly DPI budget. So this is the budget that we would be posting in the newspaper and bringing forward. And one thing I wanted to discuss with you, so with the governor approving the additional funding, we had about 270,000. For the purpose of this document, we usually bring forward a balanced budget to the board. I took that 270,000 and put it under personnel, like regular instruction costs, because if we did use it to support those funded positions, that's where it would go. I can move it out of there and put it anywhere else that you would like, but that's, you know, ideally, initially, as we get through these next couple of months before we get to the final budget, that makes the most sense. We could present to the community a balanced budget, knowing that that's in there, and we can follow up on what we do with those positions. But that would bring us to a balanced budget in Fund 10. And then we also list the rest of the funds, revenue and expenses. So again, Fund 27, we have to lay out because that's special education. We also have our debt service. Our capital funds project budget will be significantly different than last year because we don't have any more referendum expenses. So all that you'll see there are the $750,000 in expenses that we anticipate for our capital project, as well as Fund 46 fund balance, that's remaining there, just waiting to be used. And then we have our food service fund and our community service fund. So we would need approval for this, and then also approval for the tax levy and how you'd want to see that decrease look, if it's down the 0.58% or if you want me to adjust that to make it less.
So why, why do you feel that you're going to need more personnel?
So our class sizes at the kindergarten level at Lakeview, I'm trying to think back to Jeff's document.
They're right now at 27 students per, so it's just, what happens sometimes in smaller schools is you have these bubbles, it's not necessarily that you're as a whole system increasing.
Right.
But you have bubbles, and particularly the country metal stuff with that too. So that's a, that's an area that we're looking at. And then special education, just given some increases in identification of students with disabilities and the need for, and this has been our effort too, is to make sure that we're providing programming here in our system rather than contracting out. So we do have some increasing numbers of students who will require some additional aid and then a teacher.
So how many positions are you thinking you might have to have?
So it would be two, the special ed and the kindergarten would be two FTEs, and the aides are, I believe, two five-hour positions, so they're part-time positions with no benefits.
And one kindergarten, can you turn?
Yes.
So that's going to eat up that whole 270?
It won't, no, it won't.
Oh.
And then we would come back when we get closer to, after hiring, when we know actual numbers, and then we get closer to October, because what's going to happen is you'll approve the tax levy tonight, but the state aid really drives what our tax levy is going to be, and the state aid number is contingent on how everybody in the state spends their budget this year, and then nobody reports that out until October, so we won't have that number either. So there will be adjustments to the levy as well, so we would bring back where we're at with final staffing, if there's additional funds available, and all of that would come back to you, and you would approve that as a separate budget after the annual meeting. So this is just hard because it's so much earlier than what we're used to. I mean, we usually have so much more information when we approve this part of the budget in.
I'm small.
It's my fault.
So we, we have the annual meeting, 20th of October, that's, so it's four board meetings from now to then, so, and then we get our final aide right shortly, either right before or shortly after, yeah. And so then we have the first meeting in November, and to finalize, because we have to have it finalized by when? The second, by the end of November?
We have to have the tax levy finalized by November 10.
So by the first, so the first meeting in November is when the final?
We usually do it.
No, we do it right after the annual meeting.
Right after the annual meeting.
Is it, but we don't meet?
Yeah, we do.
Well, normally, when does it have to be approved by?
We always meet annual meeting, and then we follow up with the school board meeting right afterwards.
Because normally it has to be approved right by the end of October.
Right, so the idea, I'm going to go, I'm sorry, I have to pull up the calendar.
Because the annual meeting is the 28th of October.
Right after, right after that annual meeting, we have a school board meeting.
Seven o'clock is the annual, annual meeting, eight o'clock is the regular meeting.
Okay, that's right.
Yep, same night.
Right, so we would, we would give. Right, so we would, we would give, because our board meeting before that is the fourteenth, we still wouldn't have final information from the state at that point to be able to even give an update at that. So, the information will come to the board before the annual meeting. And I could try to even get it out that week after we get, because really the state aide number, we'll have everything by October fifteenth, it's just that final number.
And then make adjustments that we see necessary and we still have time to do that.
I guess, so then if we have issues-
Yeah.
-those would need to be voiced or it'll just be a long school board meeting after the annual?
And that can happen.
It, it has.
It'd be like my first day.
Try to avoid that, but, okay.
I'll be missing you all, so.
I mean, generally, it's, yeah, it's probably the-
And it's not gonna be significantly different from where we're at, from where our estimates are at right now. I mean, we're, it's, what, the big thing that could change is if a district like Madison, Beloit, Milwaukee comes in with their expenditure significantly different than what's been reported to DPI to date for this past year. So, those big districts can shift aid really quick, but it's usually not a huge swing. You just have to be aware that there has to be some adjustments that will have to occur once we get those final numbers.
So, then for tonight, though, we want to have a better understanding as to what that levy should be.
Correct.
Right now, it's a point five-eight, do we want to, does, is the board interested in looking at adjusting that down?
And again, those funds would be funds that we would levy in the debt service fund to be able to pay down debt, either through a defeasance in the future, we would just hold it in fund balance, or we could use it in future years if we start to see the levy creeping up to manage our debt in the future, we can use that to pay partial principal and have to levy less than that.
So, and we did this last year, common practice in Muskego, Norway.
Correct.
So, we went, we went a little too far last year. So, what is a point, zero-point-two-zero, negative zero-point-two-zero, how much, how much does that add to the levy?
About a hundred-ten thousand.
How much?
It's a negative point-two-four would be about a hundred-ten thousand. Hundred-and-fifteen thousand would get you to about a point-two-two, negative point-two-two.
So, I'd be all right with going down, I don't wanna go any lower than point-two-zero because I don't want that issue to come up next year where-
With the TIP, the TIP, yeah.
Because the TIP moved it point-one-five last year. And it ended up being a positive, right, point-seven.
Just over.
On people's tax bills as a result of that.
It was like just under point-one?
Yeah, we were at point, we were at point-zero-eight and then it went to a pos, or a point-eight and it went to a positive point-seven, I think. So, it went about fifteen.
And that was solely due to the-
TIP.
The TIP, based on reporting that you received though.
So, Sharon said she was going to send me an update in August of what that looked like, so we could run it against our numbers and see the impact.
So, what was the actual, I mean, in the end, what was the actual reason that, where was the, what caused it to go up from the, or where was, the, the information that you received from the city, what changed from-
You have to pull it back up, but it's, the impact of, how much of the TIP was applied to the tax bills and so-
Was less.
Right.
Right.
And so, more money was allocated by the different, or the different entities, so that the school district's portion was more because of the amount of work that was done and so more was allocated.
So, what was the reason that we didn't know that, though?
It wasn't reported to us. And honestly, I didn't get to ask.
Yeah, okay.
By who in the city?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's, because they, they own the TIP, so they're gonna know, so if they tax less or allocate less to the individual taxpayer, yeah, then we're gonna get-
But really, in common practice, they wouldn't report that to us.
It's not a normal thing that they would report to us, it's just-
It's something we should ask for.
We will, yeah, we have now, so-
You didn't ask for it last year.
Oh, I thought you did.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Nope. It wasn't until we got the call that the tax bills started going.
All right, I thought you did ask for it.
Something we should be asking for.
Yep, so in August, we have, Sharon and I are working together to make sure-
It was a surprise, but it was understandable after, but I, I mean, we looked at it, we can go to the DLR site and see it.
Right.
It's like, okay, all right.
So, if we did a point-two-oh-
Cassandra and Terry, if you really don't know what we're talking about, you know, he could, he could direct you to a huge thing on tax increment financing that could tell you exactly what we're talking about.
Okay.
So, it's not easy to understand if you haven't, it isn't easy to understand, is it?
For anyone.
No, what is it?
It's, it's hard.
Lisa Voison's amazing at explaining it, though.
Yeah, she's gotta, we have to do our class with her.
Well, ask her about TIPS and-
She would be very good.
Yeah.
So, Julie, we'll, we'll-
Just to make sure, and if this is way beyond where, if I'm way wrong, we can talk about it later, we set our tax levy at zero, at the same as it was before, then all of a sudden, this, we got money from the TIP, which technically increased our tax?
We didn't get it, it's on the individual tax bill.
Okay.
But it's our portion, so there's the technical college, the city, then the school district and it's the fourth taxing body for-
So, there's, so there's the-
City.
City, technical college, us and-
County?
County.
Yep.
So, our portion that was allocated to us and then distributed amongst the taxpayers, so it shows up on our line item on the tax bill in addition to what we taxed.
So, it was kind of, but that came from the TIP?
It came from the TIP, it came from, yes, but because it's allocated by-
So, it really didn't cost the taxpayers more, but we got more?
No, it did cost.
Right, it cost more.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm curious how that, that would've worked, so.
It's, it's a good white-brained thing and then a beard.
It is, because it's pretty much like if this happens, then this happens, if it doesn't, then this happens.
I'll, I'll see if I can find the worksheet that you sent me that I can-
Eric, so you're-
So, I would say there's a swing of about point-one-five percent, so I'm thinking if we hold back point-two percent-
From the point-five-eight?
If we at least don't go any lower than a negative point-two, we're probably, even if we see that point-one-five percent swing again, we're still gonna be negative.
So, so are you lucky then to keep this at point five-eight or point-three-eight?
No, if we go point-five-eight, we could go down to probably point-two-zero, negative two-zero at the most.
Okay.
So, that'd be a hundred-twenty-one thousand.
And that money would just go into-
Fund thirty-nine.
Fund thirty-nine to pay off debt anyways, so.
Yeah, I thought of that.
It's not, it's not like we're putting it into the general fund to spend that.
The only thing I would be interested is then what happens to Fund eighty if this scenario works, how that affects this, but, okay. Because then that would, we would probably just take, if we gave more, just put that more into Fund Thirty-nine then, right? We could use Fund eighty?
If you could use Fund eighty, you'd probably levy, you could levy that hundred-twenty-one in Fund eighty without having an impact on the overall levy.
Right, so that's, see, that would be the-
It would be separate from Fund Thirty-nine.
Right, that would be the way to do it, if you can, okay. Okay.
So, do you want me to bring that scenario back, if that's a possibility-
Yes.
-for the meeting after the annual meeting?
Yes, for the Fund eighty-one, because that would be an option that we should consider. So, then you're good with point, so point-two, Paul?
Well, if everybody else is-
I mean, there's, point-two is on the table.
I'm not talking about adjusting the money, though, to that.
So, basically, what we're saying is, is that, right now, we're talking about a levy of a negative, let's say, point-five to the taxpayer. All we're looking at is making it a negative point-two, taking that hundred-twenty-one thousand dollars that the taxpayers will pay us more-
Right.
-and put it towards debt service. You still have a negative tax levy decrease, you have a decrease, which is what our goal was.
Right.
But instead of it being a half a percent, it's, it's-
Point-two.
Point-two percent.
Right, but our, well, for, our general fund, we're levying to the limit, correct?
Correct.
So, we'd have to put it towards something that we-
Yeah, it would go in debt service.
Debt service, we're gonna-
Fund Thirty-nine.
Okay, so if we do that and then it comes back where we had that situation like last year, what do we do, just decrease the, the Fund Thirty-nine?
Well, we're hopefully gonna know, I'm just saying, in case it comes back, I would expect that it's not gonna be any more than it was last year if it changes, so that's point-one-five percent.
Right.
So, I just figured we have that two percent in there, or that point-two percent as kind of a cushion in case it happens again, but even if it does happen again, we're gonna know it in August, so we can make adjustments anyways.
But you're proposing we do that in the Fund Thirty-nine, so that we can use it future to pay off debt, and you said Fund eighty?
Well, that's something totally-
Yeah, Fund eighty would be another scenario that you would levy separately to pay for SROs, but wouldn't affect our-
Okay, so that's, that's a separate issue from-
Right, but it would be-
He doesn't even know, we don't even know right now, probably legally could be-
But it would be if we can-
I was trying to figure where that Fund eighty came in with, with Eric's, okay.
Yeah, but if we can, we just want that available for us to look at, because that would change things, so.
And we can do that with the Fund Thirty-nine, we have that flexibility.
We have the flexibility, knowing that we would have to use those dollars to pay down debt, which we'd wanna do anyways.
Okay.
So, my reasoning is, is we're still a negative tax levy, but at the same time, we're maximizing the amount of money that we can put towards paying debt on.
Right.
Anyone else have any other suggestions? Now, this can always be modified and adjusted after the annual meeting when all the numbers are there and all the scenarios that we have and probably between now and then, as these scenarios become, if they are available to us, communication can go out, so we're prepared. And then, so, that is what Eric is saying, we lower the levy to a neg-twenty and then transfer the delta between neg-twenty and neg-to-five-eight to Fund Thirty-nine to pay off debt. And then if we need to change anything, we would just modify it, we'd collect the data between now and the annual meeting and then modify it as we see fit at that school board. Is that acceptable? Good, Brett, good.
The only thing I would suggest we do next year is, I think, we're looking at, this is like our eighth year of lowering tax levy.
Maybe nine.
Maybe nine, which is a great thing, not alone. But I think what we have to really examine soon is, are we causing ourselves any harm in the future by continuing to do that?
We're not only because the board has chosen to, the formula itself is creating the negative levy.
Right.
The board has chosen to levy the money into Fund Thirty-nine. The only way that we create issues in the future is if the board decided to not levy to the max in Fund Ten, because if you choose not to take advantage of that full opportunity in the future, you could lose that levy authority.
Now, part of that nine years of lowering tax levy, some of those were not levying to the max.
Okay, I'd have to go back and look at that. And every year, it's different based on what your exemptions are, so you could look at that. I mean, we haven't done that for six years, so I could look at those other two to see, because that would be where it would potentially not carry back over.
So, can I, how, I guess, example of what I'm trying to get at is, the city of Franklin did not tax these levy limits for municipal levy limit over like a six or seven-year period. Well, then, things changed, of course, and more projects came through, road projects, things that had to be done, emergency expenses, and all of a sudden, there was talk about, even if they went to the limit, they were gonna have to go out and do borrowings to make sure that they could take care of just the bare necessities. So, you have to be careful with what we're doing also, that we're not shorting a major issue in the future. And I don't think we've been doing that, but something to think about, something for you guys to think about is, you know, I'm a part, because I've been a part of that for nine years, you know, so.
It would be a situation where if the levy was going up and you chose to make it negative, even though it could go up, that loss or that difference to keep it to go down, that dollar amount could be what you would lose. So, it would be a situation where we would have a positive levy potentially in the future. I mean, at some point, it's gonna go up, we just, we've been lucky so far, so.
I'd like to go an even decade.
Yeah.
I guess, Dr. Thompson, this is my last.
That was very shocking.
I know.
But we always have options right now, especially since we have debt service, we can use Fund Ten to pay off debt service if we, if we have that situation, right? And then we've been putting some, have we been putting some every year into the capital plan, I'm sorry, which-
A year now budgeting thirty-five thousand a year.
Every year. And we can always increase that if we feel we have excess. So, we have some options at the moment, what happens in the future, I guess, that's to see.
And we're not the only, I mean, all taxing authorities that are governed by the limits set by the state are affected by, by the, I mean, you need to know the rules and to play the game and if you don't, yeah, you short yourself here, so. Now, that, that started back even when Tabor and they started, you know, we always had to watch that very carefully, it sounded real good to lower it or to not levy, back when we had the option, that would've been the time to do it, but now that we're locked in, not levying the max could actually hurt the school district, you know, and that needs to be a lot, a lot looked at, absolutely. So, point-two-oh, delta to point-five-eight, going to Fund Thirty-nine to pay off debt, that's the budget we set forth, we're good with that? So, do you want, so is that a motion to amend what we have before, sir?
Is it, I believe, probably is.
Because what we're looking-
I can give you the total levy amount if you want.
Yeah.
The total levy would be thirty-two million, two-hundred-seven thousand, five-eighty-seven.
Okay, and that would be the point-two, right?
That, that creates the point-two, correct?
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to amend the total tax levy from thirty-two million, eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven to thirty-two million, two-hundred-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven.
I will second Mr. Schrader's motion.
Any discussion on the amendment? Here and then, all those in favor of the amended motions, signify by said aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The amended motion carries. And now, on the motion to approve, any further discussion?
Is there any else you need?
Uh, just the budget itself, so you can just, the motion to approve the budget as presented.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, so as long as you've got everything you need there. Okay, so on the motion at hand, any further discussion?
So, this is the budget that will be published, that doesn't mean it's the final, but it will be published for the October twenty-
Annual meeting.
Usually, we don't do this until September, but with her being baby Patty.
What's a boy? Maverick, Maverick, baby Maverick.
Maverick.
He's got his own kip song, dude.
Okay, here and then, all those in favor, signify by said aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries, budget carries as amended. Okay, motion carries, budget carries as amended, thank you, truly. All right. Okay, item six C, strategic plan two thousand eighteen, twenty-three updates.
Motion to approve adjustments to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, five-year strategic plan, adjustments as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
All right, so as you can see, items that are crossed out and those highlighted are the changes that we're making or recommending to the board. These have to do with, like, as we are visualizing this through our Qualtrics and having discussions with our strategic planning team, we made some suggested changes. So, for example, the AP, the focus on AP, we've changed to, you see the little red arrow into the third bullet in the middle section, which is participation in courses to earn higher education credits or industry certifications. It broadens our approach and understanding of how our students are getting experience of post-high school level learning, so it's not just AP, it's CAP, it's transcribed credits, it's all of that, so it, it broadens that. Another one that we're eliminating is college major, we are looking at an ACP completion instead, because again, it, it's not encompassing all students, and the reality of having college majors actually declared by eleventh grade is pretty low, and we wanna make sure that students are creating a plan that's flexible, and that provides them with all kinds of pathways rather than just one, which would assume, in this case, a college degree. Also, then in the middle section, you'll see that ACT work keys is crossed out, it's no longer required by the Department of Public Instruction, so that's removed. And then, the other ones are just either moved from a summative to a formative or a formative to a summative, so they're minor changes, but just wanted to keep the board updated and just also to inform you that this is a living document for us, and we continue to look at it and assess its validity and, you know, and making sure that it's measuring what we wanted to measure.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Item six D, school resource officer contract.
Motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, school resource officer contract as presented. So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Jeremiah. So, it is pretty much a repeat of last year's contract, they added a couple other parts to this. Some of the things that they added were just part of things that they've done in the past anyways. One of the first things is the routine patrol, which you guys spoke about earlier, they've always left to do patrol for issues. As a matter of fact, there's probably more SROs in our schools than there are cops on duty during the day, so they are called upon when there's an emergency. Rather than doing quarterly reports, we're now having them do a monthly log of what they're doing, all outlining the tasks that DPI says that they should be doing, so we track that as far as that and their assignments go. Really no other notable changes. They did articulate in here that they'll be charging for events like football games or large events, but they always have in the past, it just wasn't in the contract.
Well, does that mean, what did they get? So if they were working past their normal eight-hour day or whatever it is, that's when we would...
Um, I think it pertains more to additional police officers or security services, so I believe Candace used to run security and have our employees doing it, but now they're doing it through the police department, so it would be any police presence that'd be required in addition to just routine patrols. So I guess on the night of a football game where we have five or six thousand people, they may have more of their officers staffed here and charge accordingly, but according to the, uh...
I guess I'm trying to figure out what charge accordingly means.
I think it'd be just in relation to extra coverage for, for games, not even just with the SROs, but for any police officers that would be attending one of our games.
So would this be something very often...
I'm not really getting that because so...
I've seen the police officers at the games, you know, enjoying the game and doing their duties. Would this be something where there might be a compet, a, a school we've had issues with might be coming in, and the police chief says, "I think we should have one or two officers there to maintain order"?
My understanding is that the activities office contacts the police department, works through Candace to acquire staffing for large events, so we request it, and they charge us accordingly, and this has been a practice that's happened for us.
So there's nothing new here?
I don't, I don't even get that. They're policing the city of Muskego.
And there's a huge group of people...
And there's an event going on, whether it's at a church or a school or whatever.
So we don't have...
They show up, or they come to these events, or they at least are aware of the event, and they patrol the event as part of what we're paying our taxes for, so I'm not really sure. Are they, are they like, is she like hiring them as like security officers, or, I mean, what are they, what are we getting?
We're reimbursing the city for their time, just like SROs, so it's not in addition, it's this officer would've been in the city, but now is at a school event, and so we are reimbursing the city for their time on, at that event. So it's not like they're having extra duty, it's just that police officer is put there. Now again, this isn't something new, they're just putting it in this contract, 'cause we've never had anything in writing with them indicating that this was the agreement that we would have, we would be paying fifty percent of their salary if we're requiring that. Now, Ryan, for instance...
So are they paying us back when they're, they're at the event and they have to leave?
We only pay them for the time that they're there.
Is that straight time and that time and a half?
Straight time, yeah.
So if they show up just, you know, cruising around, you know, I just wanna check at the game...
No, if they're not, if they're not dedicated and they're not scheduled to be there, just like if a police officer came in to do a crisis event, that, we don't pay them, we only pay the SROs because they're scheduled to be at our schools on those days, and that's, it's the same kind of thing. Now, Ryan has looked at ways to reduce that.
Well, my question, I guess, is, is, let's say St. Al's, or St. Leonard's has a festival, and the officers, of course, would probably be in the area or walk through or whatever, they're not charging St. Leonard's for their services. I'm not sure why we're special, but I don't know why we're getting charged for a service that they would provide.
Other entities.
I mean, I would under, I would have more understanding if, if there was, let's say, some contention between our school and another one, and everybody felt that it would just be appropriate to have an extra officer there. But just to, you know, if they're, they're cruising by, they stop in, they check the game out.
Yeah, we don't pay for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't pay for that.
But I, how do we get the, I could be involved in that?
This is like at the discretion of the district.
Yeah, I guess it'd be interesting to see what other districts do, because, now I'm just going back to my line of work.
Yeah.
We got the football schedule in the beginning of the school year, and the school would say, "Hey, we appreciate having two officers, an auxiliary officer, whatever, we provide them, because it's all coming out of the same pockets." You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's whether it's out of the school district's pocket into the city's pocket or whatever, but, I mean, that's just, that's what your law enforcement in your community does, is they go to these events, so I'm not sure. And I thought, well, maybe, I, I know sometimes there's, they were hiring security, which were police officers, but in security uniforms, and we were paying them a security rate. So I guess I'm, I'm just interested in knowing, are we basically reimbursing them for whatever their wage is, I think, and...
Unless there's an hourly fee that, that's worked out, but everything that we've heard is that this has been an ongoing practice, and it's been budgeted for.
'Cause there are the orange shirts too, right? I mean, it's the, it's the officers in full garb, and then there are these orange shirt security people that can be officers or retired officers or whatever. There's layers, and then our own security people who are...
That's like what Miller Park does, with the red shirts.
But we can, um, 'cause that's internal, it's not like they're saying you have to schedule us, but the question I'm hearing from you, Eric, is what are other districts doing around us? Are they actually having to schedule those officers to come in and then they're paying, reimbursing the city essentially for their time? But we can, we can definitely bring that up.
And maybe it's different here, 'cause I guess I'm, I worked in an environment where we had six to eight officers working at all times, I know they don't have that level of officers working here on a given show, so, 'cause we just use people that were on duty to go to these events, so, might be different. It's interesting.
It's just that if we do schedule them, the police department is saying you're gonna pay fifty percent of the...
Well, the other thing that we did, and I'm just throwing this out, is like the SRO in Franklin, on nights where there's football games, he worked, he didn't work...
He flexed his time.
Right, so he worked like one to nine.
Yeah.
And then, if there were any calls, we have three SROs, so if there was a call at the high school between seven AM and one AM, one of the SROs from the other school would come over and take care of that, which would basically limit our amount of hours that officer, because the SRO didn't make overtime, which I'm thinking here it probably, the SRO probably makes overtime whenever she's here at night, which we're paying.
So, yeah, what does, what does the contract here at Muskego say or dictate for those officers?
Well, I think the wages that they gave probably, probably are what that officer, it probably has something to do with what that officer made last year, which probably includes overtime. I'm not sure how that works, but...
I'm not sure either, or if that was like the total benefit package, and you do have the benefits in there.
The other thing, Jeremiah, is, and it's just to Eric's saying, I can't catch that first, but it says the parties agree that, you know, blah, 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 it says all of this is deemed appropriate at the discretion of the police chief. So the way I read that, I guess now, after hearing Eric, does it, the chief of police could just throw five officers there and charge us?
That was our question to Ryan, too, that was my first getting clarity around all this, can do they determine how many officers, and Ryan said that they've always called in how many they were gonna request, so it wasn't based upon a police, uh...
So why is that in there then?
Or anything like that?
At the discretion of the police chief.
We can bring that back to the...
Well, to, yeah, it's, it's interesting that if, because this is obviously not the police department doing, I mean, I, this is the city doing this, so this, this requires, yeah, I mean...
Were, were we being charged at games before? Yes. We just didn't have it built in the contract.
Right.
I mean, if, if, if it's gonna be in the contract and we're gonna pay for it, I'd rather at least say than what you, you said that, then it's based on our discretion, we'll pay for extra police officers based on our request, not on what's deemed appropriate by the police chief. I would hope that what's deemed appropriate by the police chief is governed by the safety of Muskego, he's not gonna wait and charge churches and schools and whatnot to provide the services that our taxpayer dollars pay. So, I mean, I'd be happy to have that conversation with the chief or the mayor, but, so I'm, I'm not sure if we've been doing this chargeback, you know, I'm not sure we can, how I think of that now, but if we're gonna codify this understanding into a contract, we should probably then make sure...
Have a little more control over that, right?
Yeah, right, right, because, and, and I, I believe everything you're saying, that we've been doing this and it's been standard practice, and what's here though doesn't seem to agree with what you're saying, so we should at least just change that then.
Should have a meeting tomorrow so we can flush them aside.
For sure.
Well, again, and we're not, I don't think we're really, we're getting a great service from, from these, from these officers and the police department, and it's nice to have as much attention as they pay to us, so I don't think we're complaining about it, I think we're just trying to get our arms around what could be basically an open rate or an open payment that we're not really sure. I know it says fifty percent of salary and benefits, straight time, but I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just confused a little bit. But then we also talk about, you know, maybe we have our SRO at the high school on events where it's in the evening, work a one to nine or two to ten, because they do stay up on the letter M under thirteen, when the SRO is due, absent due to illness or vacation, the other SROs will basically interact at that school if, if needed, so it's not like they can really have a defense of, "Well, we don't wanna leave a school without an SRO", because I'm sure that happens from time to time throughout the school year also.
And it's accounted for, so it clearly...
We do have a spoken agreement on that topic, that another officer from the field will come in during key times, so each school will pick their critical time, so if, same as Skegill Lakes, Dylan's out, they've picked lunchtime as their key time, so then they'll have a field officer come over to the school, but that wasn't in writing, it's just...
Well, and I don't know, maybe we're, maybe we're nitpicking, like, this might just be a couple thousand dollars that it's probably not even worth our time and effort, but...
It'd be interesting to find out what it is.
Maybe it's more, and maybe in times when budgets are tight, you know, maybe we have the SROs work a flexible shift. I don't think there really is, is there a set hours, I don't see that in here.
There's some certain things with Candace's position, it was, it was a very unique position when it was created, so there's a lot of things built into it here at the high school, so you check into it.
But I mean, like, the contract here doesn't really state that they're working from six-thirty AM to two-thirty PM or anything like that, so I'm not sure how that would...
Yeah, I don't know if they have a contract that, that dictates what first shift is, you know, 'cause I think she starts earlier at the police station, so is her, yeah.
And I don't know if...
Yeah, how, does it actually work? Because the schools start and stop at different times, so do they correlate to that, to our schedule or to their first shift or to the first shift schedule?
And I'm not sure how they do it, like in the contract in Franklin, it was written in, the school district said, "We want them here from seven-thirty to three-thirty", so we basically wrote into the union contract for the police that the SRO position is from seven-thirty to three-thirty.
For each of the, the school, or for the school that they're at?
Right, right.
Yeah, for the high school, it seems pretty written in stone, I think it was part of her, potentially her union contract, but the other two have been flexible, so we just, whatever the school goals are, they've adjusted.
So are they there, so, so I'm assuming that the SROs at Muskego Lakes and Lake, anyone there, they're from the beginning of school to the end of school, and the same thing with the high school, right? Maybe it's just, so where do you wanna go with this?
I don't think we, I don't know if we really wanna go anywhere with it, I think it's just...
Can you picture a contract where we, we can talk about this, but is it fine, the way it is now to go forward, or do you want something?
No, I think it should go forward, I think maybe we just need some clarification as to, it sounds like what you're saying is that...
We could just best this term, moving ahead, yeah.
The activities office requests officers, and then they send officers, and we pay half of the cost of that officer being there, is what I understand, yeah? I mean, it sounds fair.
So we can talk about this?
The whole thing that kinda is, is odd for me is I just came from a different environment where we, we didn't charge people for independent services that we provided, we just, if they requested it for safety and security of our community as a whole, we went there. So it's, I guess it's just a little different mindset.
I think it's good to clarify it.
So we can go forward as is, and then we'll just get clarification, and then possibly, based on that, the following words we can rewrite and redraft, is that good? Okay, anything else?
I'd like to see the numbers next year if we could on how much we, for the extra above.
Oh, absolutely, and how many requests actually went out and stuff, and might be helpful for negotiations too, if that's how they wanna do it, I guess we're kinda...
Oh, maybe we track it this year.
I mean, there are services we want and they're providing and we want them. So I guess if we have to-
So the Activities Department tracks when they make requests and what we get and what the invoices are from the city. So we can just see what we're-
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Okay, item six E, Self-Provisioned Fiber Project Phase Two.
Motion to approve the self-provisioned fiber optic phase two project.
Mrs. Blair? Discussion.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, Tony.
Hey.
And Ryan.
Tony.
Thanks. So instead of going into a lot of detail, again, this is phase two of twenty-five phases we'll be doing. And I'm just kidding. This will most likely be the last phase that we have to build out for any fiber in the district. Once we have this be connected to all buildings in the district and then out. This eliminates certain costs for us, gives us an advantage there, allows us to increase internet bandwidth considerably without any additional cost. Gets us out to WISNET directly, which is our internet service provider. And then if we complete the full loop to both Franklin schools and to the Nuburland Fire Station, we'd have a redundant opportunity for fiber as well. This would all be within our own budget, not asking for extra funds, just given the green light to proceed. There's still plenty of steps to do to get this all organized and set up. We've done a lot of groundwork to get here. And we still have active conversations on a regular basis to both connect to those entities and others. So instead of going into a lot of detail, why don't I see if there are any questions? We can go from there.
Any discussion? I think we've been through this. So, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Can't see you back there, Ryan. So, okay, item six F, Gifts, Grants, and Bequests.
Motion to accept with thanks, gifts, and grants as noted. Bay Lane Elementary School, Raven Services, Inc., for Blazefest Spring Concert, six-hundred-twenty-six dollars. Varsity softball dugouts, total outdoor services in conjunction with the Coppa family are honored to donate materials not to exceed fifteen-hundred dollars to construct roof structures on the varsity softball dugouts. Grants, district, DPI Career and Technical Education Grant, eighty-one thousand. DPI Non-Traditional Occupation Grant, up to seven thousand dollars. DPI Post-Secondary Outcome Grants, grant for students with IEPs, eighteen thousand dollars. DPI School-Based Mental Health Services Grant, which we heard about earlier, seventy-five thousand dollars. And the Lakeview Elementary School Jump Rope for Heart, one thousand twenty-five dollars for cardio equipment. So moved.
Any discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Discussion Items. A debt defeesence.
So I'm just following up on our previous discussion. The board had some questions related to our discussion around debt defeesence and whether it was the right time. So again, we have debt that is callable but not to the year 2026. So if the court chose to defees debt, we would simply be putting the money that we would allocate either from fund balance, it would be from fund balance and put that into an escrow account. So the level of funding, the question, there were a few questions. What was the level of funding that would be worth defeesing? So I talked with Lisa and she said at least a half a million dollars or more to make it worth the cost, because the cost of issuance for the debt defeesence doesn't change based on the dollar amount. So you will pay the same amount of cost of issuance regardless of whether it's a hundred thousand or a million dollars of defeesing debt. Would we be able to refinance anytime before 2026? So the law just changed that there is now a ban on refinancing before the call date, which is 2026. So that would not be an option for us moving forward. And then can we use the referendum interest earnings on the project and then transfer money from ten to thirty-nine, hold the funds in fund balance for future debt defeesence? So we can do that, but we can do that at any time. And given that we used a significant amount of fund balance already this year for all of our projects, we may want to wait till next year and just put it in the budget that we're going to transfer money from fund balance from fund ten to fund thirty-nine. So we can do that anytime. It doesn't have to be something that's decided today. It could be next month or in the budget for next year. So based on all of this information, you know, I think that the concern was that we were taking money that we could invest ourselves or that we could potentially utilize in the future and lock it up in something that we wouldn't have any control over. So I think the recommendation is that we don't move forward with it. But if we want to continue to plan for defeesence as we get closer to 2026, we can start outlining a plan of what that looks like moving forward in the next couple budget years.
Any other discussion or questions or comments or anything? Any clarification? Okay, moving on. Item eight, Information Follow-Up. Item A, item B, anything? Hearing none. Vote for closed session. First one, it's Wisconsin Statute nineteen-eight-five, one sub E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the expenditure of public funds whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically the sale of property. Nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub C, for the purpose of considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of specific employees over which the board has juris- deduction, specifically date's evaluation. The only reason we will be going back into closed session is to adjourn. So a motion is in order to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now going to close.